Call this regular meeting of the James City Service Authority Board of Directors to order. Good evening, Mr. Powell.
Good evening.
If you'd call the roll, please.
Mr. McGlynnon?
Here.
Mr. Hippel?
Here.
Mr. Eisenhour?
Here.
Ms. Larson?
Here. I'd like to ask for a motion to allow Ms. Sadler to participate remotely due to an illness that prevents her from attending the meeting.
We'll move.
Thank you. Mr. Powell, if you'll call the roll.
Mr. McGlynnon?
Aye.
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Mr. Eisenhour?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Ms. Sadler, do you designate the vice chair as the presiding officer for today's meeting?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you. I see we have no presentations.
That's correct.
Okay. Any public comment?
No, ma'am.
All right. We have a consent calendar that has minutes of adoption, formal acceptance of water in sewer systems fiscal year 2020, contract awards annual engineering service. Is there a motion to approve?
Move the adoption of the consent calendar?
Thanks. All in favor?
Aye.
Is there any?
Aye.
Thank you. We have one public hearing and easement extinguishment for SP 20-0007, King of Glory Church. Mr. Powell?
Land Tech Resources on behalf of the King of Glory Church has requested that the JCSA extinguish a 2,350 square feet of an existing 20-foot easement. The request is made because of an expansion project. The church needs to relocate the water main, and they will dedicate a new easement to us after construction is complete. Staff recommends approval of the resolution.
Okay. With that, I could open the public hearing. Are there any speakers this evening?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Close the public hearing and look to the board.
Move the resolution abandoning the easement?
Thank you. Mr. Powell?
Mr. McGlynnon?
Aye.
Ms. Hippel?
Aye.
Mr. Eisenhour?
Aye.
Ms. Sadler?
Aye.
And Ms. Larson?
Aye. That brings us to board considerations. Contract award College Creek Water Main Crossing, 672,000. Mr. Powell?
James City Service Authority currently has one water main crossing College Creek along Route 199 that provides service to customers east of College Creek. The water main is attached to the VDOT bridge that spans College Creek, and this water main is in need of rehabilitation. Another water main that was installed in the bed of College Creek several years ago failed and was determined to be unreparable. In order to improve reliability and redundancy to the area east of College Creek and to allow the existing water main to be removed from service so that it can be rehabilitated, JCSA solicited bids for approximately 1,100 feet of new 14-inch water main to be laid under College Creek. Seven bids were received. Jay Sanders Construction was the lowest and responsible bidder. They've done work for us successfully in the past, and staff recommends approval of the resolution awarding the contract to Jay Sanders Construction in the amount of $672,000.
Are any questions? Is there a motion?
Motion for approval.
Thank you. Mr. Powell?
Mr. McGlynnon?
Aye.
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Mr. Eisenhour?
Aye.
Ms. Sadler?
Aye.
And Ms. Larson?
Aye. Thank you. With that, are there any board requests and directives? Sadler?
I'm good. Thank you.
Thank you. That brings us to the general managers update. Mr. Powell?
Just a couple of brief items. I did want to note in the monthly dashboard that we are now providing, I did want to note that on the water service and sewer service revenue, we have come to the end of June, so the data was available through the end of June, but we do have what we call an accrual period for the Service Authority because revenue that we collect in July and into August is actually for service that was provided in June. So you may have noticed that it looks like our revenues are maybe a few hundred thousand dollars short, but we actually anticipate that we will exceed our revenue projections because we do have additional revenue coming in that will be accrued back to fiscal year 20. So we'll have that more, that information will be included in next month's packet, but just wanted to note that because it may look a little deceiving the way it looks now, but there should be additional revenue coming in. The only other item I had is I did want to announce that Josh Shea, who is in our water distribution section, was the recipient of the Employee of the Year Award for the James City Service Authority this year. As you know, that is usually announced at our annual safety awards and Employee of the Year luncheon, which we were unable to hold this year, but we did move forward with selecting an Employee of the Year, and I'm happy to say Mr. Shea was selected. The main reason for his selection was just the amount of after-hours work that he volunteers for, his reliability, dependability, and commitment to the organization.
Congratulations to him. Thank you.
I'm sure I just wanted to say that I appreciate very much the new dashboard. I think it really is very helpful and appreciate all the good information that's contained there.
Great.
Any other comments? Right, with?
Just extend our congratulations, please, to Mr. Shea. Appreciate all his hard work as everyone with JCSA.
I certainly will. Thanks, Ms. Sadler.
Thank you. With that, is there a motion to adjourn until 4:00 p.m. on September 22, 2020 for the regular meeting?
Motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any nays?
Aye.
Okay. With that, we're adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Okay. I'll call to order this meeting of the James City County Board of Supervisors for the purpose of a work session. Mr. Stevens, will you call the roll, please?
Mr. McGlynnon?
Here.
Ms. Larson?
Here.
Mr. Hippel?
Here.
Mr. Eisenhour?
Here.
We need a motion to allow Ms. Sadler to participate remotely due to a medical issue that prevents her from attending the meeting.
So moved.
Okay. Mr. Stevens, call the roll, please.
McGlynnon?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Mr. Eisenhour?
Aye.
Okay, and welcome aboard. Sue, you still here, Russ?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Good. Before we start our board discussions, I would need a motion to amend the agenda to add VDOT quarterly update. Mr. Ross Carroll's available to be here, so.
Yeah, it's a move.
Okay, we have a motion to amend the agenda to put the quarterly update on. Mr. Stevens, call the roll, please. Mr. McGlynnon?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Ms. Sadler?
Aye.
Mr. Eisenhour?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay. We will then start out with Mr. Ross Carroll, VDOT update. And thank you for taking time to be here for us.
Good afternoon. Thank you for having me. It's been a little while, but let's just call this a long quarter update. Since our last one, we have accomplished a lot. Even with the COVID-19 effects on our department, we were able, we still had our workforce, about 60% of our workforce doing day-to-day maintenance activities out on the roadway. We completed 1,074 work orders out of 1,174 work orders received between February and June 30. That was a 91% completion rate. Out of that 100 outstanding, 46 of them are roadway, I mean, I'm sorry, drainage issues. The other 50 are roadway and four vegetation. Few highlights of maintenance accomplishments for that period of time. We ditched over 32,000 feet throughout James City County. We swept over 30 lane miles throughout the county. We patched over 600 potholes. We used nine tons of asphalt for surface repairs. We did five shoulder miles of shoulder rehabilitation. We did site distance mowing to equal over 60 acres. We completed our second primary and secondary mowing cycle in June, and we started the primary only on the 20th of this month. The next primary and secondary cycle is projected to start in August. Our current project still underway is I-64 widening segment three. That includes reconstruction of existing lanes, additional 12-wide travel lane and median shoulder in each direction. The outside paved shoulders will be widened from 10 to 12 foot. Ramp acceleration and deceleration lanes on I-64 will be lengthened. Two bridges over Colonial Parkway, two bridges over Lakeshead Drive will be rehabilitated and widened, and two 900-foot-long bridges over Queens Creek will be completely replaced. Traffic has been switched to the widening westbound Queens Creek Bridge, and demolition of the eastbound bridge is 95% complete. Noise panels on the new eastbound Queens Creek Bridge will be transparent. Approximately two miles of noise walls with a rustic brick finish will be placed along the corridor. Excavation and concrete placement for noise wall footings is underway. Several traffic switches to the newly constructed inside lanes are complete, and traffic shifts to the newly paved areas will continue until June of 2021. Project construction is scheduled to be completed around December of 2021. The Long Hill Widening Project, that is from 199 to Old Town, work began back in November of 2019. Phase one is underway with water line relocations complete, and new westbound lanes from 199 to Old Town are almost complete. Once these lanes are complete, traffic will be switched over to the new lanes, and construction of the widening will commence. This is to be completed in the fall of 2021. Reb share project, which is incorporated into the Long Hill Widening Project, is the Old Town Reb Share Project. That's to improve the singleized intersection in Old Town and Long Hill, add a turn lane with capacity. Long Hill Road Widening will include the intersection improvements. This project will extend the existing right lane and the adjacent sidewalk. This work is in phase two of the Long Hill Road Project and is scheduled to begin November of this year. News Road and Centerville Road, that project was to increase the safety and capacity at the intersection of Centerville and News by constructing a right turn lane on News, a right and left turn lane on Centerville, and adding a new traffic signal. Contract started January of 2020 and is projected to be completed in November this year. Contractors working on the retaining walls and left turn lanes currently. Skins Creek Connector, which is a design build or Greenmount Parkway, extended, and that's to construct two new lanes connecting Route 60 and Route 143. The project is a design build. Contract executed was January of 2020. Notice proceed issued in February, and the estimate start completion means start construction is early 2021. Project date to open connector to traffic is June 29, 2021. Plant mix schedule has started, our yearly plant mix schedule. In James City County, we have Route 143 from New Cooper New City Line to Braskin Second Entrance. We'll be repaving 199 westbound from Route 60 overpass to College Creek Bridge. Route 5 eastbound from Prosperity Court to Ironbound Road. Route 60 from Chickahominy Road to Croker Road. Route 60 eastbound ramp Lightfoot at 199 northbound. Captain John Smith, Back River Lane and Page Landing Subdivision, Rain Tree Way, Allison Drive, and Rain Tree Subdivision, Lafayette Boulevard, Village Square subdivision, four streets included in that. Jamestown Hundred subdivision also includes four streets. We have Route 601 Barnes Road from 60 to Diascoms Road, Paddock Lane from Route 5 to Cooley Road, and Midlands Road from Ironbound Road to the turnaround. We currently, if you've ridden around, you'll see some additional FYA, that's the flashing yellow area there. We had the Route 199 at Route 31 completed. The Route 31 there at Jamestown Road in Sandy Bay was complete, and also 614 Centerville Road at 612 Long Hill Road been completed. Upcoming projects is the Croker Road four-lane widening from Library to Route 60. It's a widened road, increased capacity from 60 to Route 1647 Point of Woods Road. It's currently in the PE phase. Right away, it will start November this year, and construction start in 2023. Sidewalk and Bike Way on Route 60 from Croker to Old Church Road. It's approximately four tenths of a mile sidewalk and bike lane project to increase pedestrian and bikeway connectivity. This connects to the existing project and also Croker Road Widening, which will have pedestrian facility as well. Project is being coordinated with the Croker Road Project. Currently, the project is preliminary engineering with projected start of construction in 2021. We have smart scale, the Long Hill Road shared use path, construction of a shared use path to fill the gap from the Long Hill Road Project, which is under construction now, to from the Pew Drive to Lanes Place. PE currently started with scoping activities and survey projected to begin by the end of the month. Project start is 2024, and this is smart scale. Couple things I will note. We had the completion of the Route 31 Safety Project there at, I'm going to say Neckeland, with the flashing beacons at 35. That was put up early summer and took a while to get power to it, but it is in operation now, and we have bought, and they have arrived, the rapid flashing beaking parts for the pedestrian crossing on Ironbound at the park. So we hope to start construction on that in August and complete that by September or in September. There are the safety projects there. I will say that just on the land use side, we have reviewed 196 plans for the county, 21 in the past month and a half. We've issued 203 land use permits for utilities or driveways or whatever it may be. Out of those 203, 190 of them have been completed or closed out. Additions, we added 1.35 miles to the network here in the county this fiscal year, and we abandoned Point 12, so a net increase of 1.23. Been busy. There's a lot of construction and development in the area, so I expect that number to continue to rise. That concludes my report. If any of the board members have any comments or questions or items that I can take back, I'd be glad to take them at this time.
I can start off. First of all, thank you. I know we asked you to take care of some cleanup work along Route 199 between Mounts Bay and South Henry, and I hope that, I know some of it is a longer-term project with the guardrail that has sandbags around it. You need to identify funding for that, but appreciate the attention to that. Related to that, I know we've asked, and I just want to kind of underline desire, I haven't been there in the last week or so, so if it's already been taken care of, that's great, but we asked long request to have some street sweeping done on Route 60 in Grove, especially around the Charlton-Bivouac area. Basically, dirt has now come up on the road all the way up to the top of the curb, so it's indistinguishable from the roadway, and there's a line of sight issue there at Charlton-Bivouac as well, right at Route 60. In addition, I know I've asked you to spend a little bit of time in Rolling Woods and have had the, as I've been out walking my new pup, have had neighbors stop me and just say, "You're on the Board of Supervisors. Can you get them to do something about these roads in here?" And the issue in particular is that we have now cracking just over the entire neighborhood of the pavement, which is in some places leading to potholes, and in a number of places is associated with ruts that have developed on both sides of the road in a number of, on a number of streets. You know, I know that it was slurry sealed, my favorite.
Five years ago.
My favorite. Five years ago, and that's about what you expected to get out of it, right?
Absolutely.
Yeah, right. So it's time for it to be addressed. And related to that also, just want to once again put a little tickle for Lake Powell Road off of Neckeland, relatively short section of road, which has not been addressed in my tenure on this board, which is a fair amount of time. So if there's any way to deal with that small section of road that is in terrible shape, but you know, doesn't get a whole lot of traffic, that would be terrific. Thanks for everything you're doing. I know it's, when you send those crews out there right now, they're walking into a convection oven, but we really do appreciate their efforts. There's one kind of, just stick in the back of your mind issue maybe, maybe you know the answer to this right off the top of your head, but we are going to be beneficiary, I anticipate, of some federal support, and I just wonder if there is anything that would allow us to partner with you to maybe undertake some kind of project that might not be at the top priority list because of that. So just, you know.
Well, I mean, we have opportunities through our, I mean, now all of our, most of our projects are scored or Reb Share.
Right.
Or TAP, which is AD20. However, you know, those type of opportunities or money you bring to the table.
Thank you.
So I want to thank you for the help on, with the beacons and the advocacy of that neighborhood. They spent a lot of time, especially Mr. Smith. So I appreciate your cooperation and working with them. I did, I am still, there's been additional accidents at Five and Green Springs. I'm not a, I don't know about Five and Centerville. I have not seen the, but I wondered if you could get me an update on the statistics since we last had that conversation, because that's that intersection, those intersections still remain of great concern to me, and I don't know when the last time was that we got updated numbers, but I'm hoping, and I know that maybe they don't qualify to get in the accident category. I'd like to know. So, okay. Thank you.
Sue, you have anything?
Yes. Hello, Ms. Carroll. Thank you for being here this evening. Just two items. As you're exiting 64 westbound at 227, you go to turn left. We always have an issue with that shrubbery right there that makes it difficult to see for people turning left. And then just one other spot, it's not in my district, Michael, I believe it's yours or Jim's, but it's, this was a complaint from my grandson, and I told him I would bring it up, that as you're leaving the whisk to cross, to cross over Long Hill, there's a lot of shrubbery off to the right. I don't know if it's the easement or if it's on property or not, but he tells me it's very difficult when he's trying to cross the road with his bike to see. So, and as, in my car, I can attest that he is correct. So, like I said, I don't know whether that's easement right there or not, but it is very difficult to see as you're crossing Long Hill Road there. So that's all I have, and I appreciate. At the whisk, yes. If you're coming out of the whisk, it's on the right-hand side on Long Hill Road.
Okay, thank you. I will provide you an update as well on the Schoolhouse, Route 30 and Old Stage. We did perform an RSA at that intersection using the counts that we did during the signal justification report.
Yes.
Have received a draft final that we are performing comments on now, so I expect that we'll have a final for that in the next, I don't know, four or five weeks.
All right. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay. And I want to thank you. You mentioned one I had on my list, which is the pedestrian crossing Ironbound into the park. So I guess if the parks are finally here, we're.
We do. We have them. We bought them. It's just a process of getting it scheduled and getting it.
That's great. Okay. I have two, two things. One is a personal one I noted, and it had to do with probably the, I don't know whether, probably on the previous section of 64. When you're coming up from the lower peninsula and you get off 64 onto 199 at the south end, that loop, the 270-degree turn back around, has been, apparently they trench in the middle of this thing all the way around, I don't know what they did, but it's patched, and it is the most awful pavement surface. It's very rough, and it's a very tight turn. It's very rough, and I was surprised that it didn't get at least an overlay across the, you know, the top of the whole thing. If you could take a look at that and see if is that, was that something that was just overlooked?
Something I just mentioned in our plant mix schedule. So that's.
Is that the one?
This year's paving.
Okay. I wasn't sure whether that was, okay. That's perfect. I was looking at it. I couldn't quite connect the two. I wanted to make sure we got that. So if that's been taken care of, I appreciate it. The other thing, and I'll give it to you, I'll forward you the email as well. I just got it yesterday. This was from a constituent, and it's in Powhatan Secondary, and it's on the side where the swimming pool is. It runs, you know, you can come down by the, I guess, the Steeplechase Apartments. You can get on and come through how, uh, Secondary, and it comes back up and joins News Road. At Charterhouse Lane, where they're in there, where their swimming pool is, there are a lot of people that walk to that swimming pool, and apparently they're having some real difficulty with people's feeding and people not slowing down for, you know, kids crossing. And the lady in the email complained that she had to jerk her kid back to keep from getting hit by a car. I know there's not much we can do in the way of traffic calming. It's a public road, but in, there are certain places that I got to thinking about, that might be an opportunity to have a four-way stop. What that would do is that would slow down the traffic and allow people to cross to a greater degree. Either that or have some sort of pedestrian crossing. So I'll forward you the email and ask you to look at that, see what we can do to try to enhance safety for folks who are walking to their swimming pool and.
We've been working with the HOA.
Very good. Very good. I'll make sure you get the email and take a look at that. So that's it. Thank you, sir. I appreciate your.
Thank you all very much.
Time. Okay. You are now going to do contract award for cardiac monitor replacement. Chief Ash.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board.
Evening.
Before, this evening is a resolution to award a contract for the replacement of our cardiac monitors. These devices are carried on each of our frontline amulets and our fire apparatus, and we had put a plan in place to update these in future CIP. However, last year, the FDA issued a letter saying that a significant portion of our existing equipment would be out of FDA approval come February of 2021, so that has sped up the process a little bit to replace our monitor. So the award of this contract would replace all 25 of our units on the frontline apparatus. We have looked at a couple different purchasing options. One of those is a cash purchase, another is a lease, and another is issuing some short-term debt. Tonight's resolution would simply award the contract and allow that equipment to start production while we work with finance over the next 30 to 60 days on a plan of how exactly to pay for those. Happy to answer any questions.
And you had answered my question earlier about what happens to the old equipment. Apparently, this is a trade-in type of operation where they take care of the old.
Yes, for part of our negotiating project was to take those in on trade.
All righty. Are there any questions?
No, I was just going to say there's, we can't tie this back to CARES money, I guess.
Mr. Sharon, speak up.
I took the words out of my mouth. We have had that discussion. That's part of the waiting to see how we're going to pay for it, ongoing discussion.
Okay.
It is in the CIP. It is one of the projects that remain in the CIP after the reductions to the budget. So it is currently funded in the CIP as a cash purchase. However, given the current situation and just watching cash flow in general, we are exploring whether or not financing would make sense, or is it, or if there is an alternative source, whether it be the CARES money or some of the other COVID funds that have come to the county. What I would like to do is reach out to our partners on the federal and state side and have a very open conversation and direct conversation on whether or not it would qualify.
And if I could follow up, Chief Ash may have said it, it just took me a while to hear. We really had budgeted these over a two-year timeframe. We're having to purchase them all now, and Sharon and I have discussed, could we, the ones budgeted for this year, part of the COVID or CARES Act is that if it's budgeted, you're not supposed to supplant it with the CARES Act money, but these others were budgeted, were in the CIP for next year, so they weren't yet approved. So could half of them apply? And the answer is maybe. I mean, that's some of the conversations we're having, but do credit to the vendor and the fire department for getting them all in really under what we thought our cost would be. That's some good financial news for us.
Great. Are there questions for staff? I'll look for a motion. Motion for approval. Motion for approval. Mr. Stevens?
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Ms. Sadler?
Ms. Sadler?
Sadler?
Hi.
Got you. Mr. McGlynn?
Aye.
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Mr. Eisenhour?
Aye.
Motion CARES. Okay, thank you. Okay, uh next on our agenda is CARES Act funding discussion. Ms. Veenruth and Ms. Day.
Uh so we're gonna work together. I'm gonna let um Sharon start off a little kind of, especially if we don't work together on this presentation.
Good afternoon, Chairman, members of the board. Before we took a deep dive into the COVID and the CARES Act funding, we thought it might be beneficial to provide an update on where we're projecting to end fiscal year twenty, um which of course ended on June thirtieth. For us, although the the last day of the year is June thirtieth, we continue in the prior year mode for the next couple of months. So we we would like to continue to update you as the figures start to come in. As you know, most of our revenue is received in arrears. Um sales tax being two months behind and meals and lodging tax being one month behind. Um we're specifically interested in those figures, uh given the the reliance that we have on the tourism industry. Um so just touching base on lodging tax uh in general. Back when we updated you in April, um of course, back then, we didn't know that we would be entering the phase approach um to reopening, and we also did not know that Busch Gardens would not be reopening for the season. Um as a result of that, the numbers um are slightly worse than what we had originally projected for lodging tax. Um currently, and again, we're still collecting for June. We're in the month of July now. Uh but for the last three months, uh we are down about seventy-five percent when we compare ourselves to last year for the lodging tax. Our projection back in April is that we would be down about seventy percent. So a little worse off, not too significantly. On the meals tax side, we had originally projected that we would be down about forty percent. Um however, given that the the restaurants remain closed through most of the fiscal year, um we have come in about sixty percent down compared to last year. On the sales tax side, we of course have three different sales tax figures. We have first our local sales tax, which is one percent of the state sales tax. We also have our additional one percent historic triangle sales tax. And then we receive the sales tax for education, which we pass on wholly to the school division. And that is a statewide calculation that is based on one and one-eighth percent. Uh for the local sales tax that we receive at the county and retain at the county, we are down about thirty percent. Uh we had projected back in April that we would be down about thirty-five percent. So that number is actually better than what we had projected. The other thing I wanted to mention is not all these numbers are created equal. So although the lodging tax may be a little worse and meals tax may be a little worse, sales tax is better and sales tax is a bigger number than the other two. So overall, we're still netting out about the same. Um for the sales tax, the additional historic sales tax, which is the one percent just for these three localities, we are down about twenty-five percent, which is interesting because you would think it would be the same as the other, but it's not. Uh we had projected we would be down about thirty-five percent. So again, that is that is a positive trend that we are seeing. To really throw a wrench in the mix, um the sales tax for education again is a statewide number that's based on sales, not just locally here, but across the state. We receive one point one eight percent. That number we had projected would be down about thirty percent. That number is actually up compared to the last three months of last year. It's up by about three percent. That has a direct impact on the school division because those dollars are are a pass-through. We receive the money and we give the money back to the school division. So in summary, we had projected that we would be down about seven point six million dollars in revenue back in April. These three taxes being the majority of that. The proposal was that we would split that reduction with the school division at roughly a fifty fifty percent split. Their share would have been about three point four million dollars or so. That was made up of capital and the sales tax for education. The piece that's tied to sales tax for education has not been a reduction because that number has come in above the projection. The capital piece, they have refunded to us. That was about two point five million dollars. Two million of that we've already received in cash. The other half a million, we expect to receive when the projects have been closed. What we are waiting on there is final invoices from the contractors. We do typically see contractors bill us in July and August for their May and June work. So once we get that, we're able to close out the books. We do expect them to make another cash payment to us of at least half a million dollars. And that will make them whole on their half of the projection. So with that, again, overall, we had projected that we would be roughly seven point six million. Um the numbers now are closer closer to six point two million on the revenue side. Um we did see some positive trends on our real estate and personal parpy tax where we thought we would take a minor hit there. Uh we didn't experience that. So that's very good news. Um we also had um some positive numbers in some of our other revenue categories. Um we did see a dip in our charges for services for parks and recreation. Again, that makes sense. That's program-driven. We didn't see the revenue, but we didn't have the expenditures either. So those two offset each other. On the expenditure side, however, we had savings of approximately eight million dollars. So overall, we're projecting to end the year with a surplus of roughly one point eight million. For the eight million in savings on the expenditure side, about two million of that is attributable to turnover and vacancy savings. The other six million is driven by county capital projects and school capital projects. The lodging tax transfer that we provide to the tourism fund, again, lower revenue means a lower transfer to that fund. Um and then just savings overall, um just some of the additional measures that we've put in. We've postponed several things. Um we've been monitoring expenditures and of course departments were asked to hold expenses to a minimum. And we did see those those efforts pay off. That's all I have on just year-end projections. Um as far as fiscal year twenty-one, of course, we are just in July. Um all the money that's come in so far this year has pretty much been for last year. We'll continue in that mode probably for another thirty days or so. Typically, we accrue, use the term accrue, we post items back to the previous year for about forty-five days after year-end. This year, we've extended that to sixty days because of the additional time that we gave people to pay their personal parpy and real estate tax bills. We are seeing other localities go as far as seventy-five to ninety days. We do have some latitude there. Gatsby has really left it up to a local decision, although you have to have a basis for that decision. Uh we'll continue continue to monitor that, but at this point, that is not our recommendation. We are projecting a surplus and anything we move back to next year will hurt us this year. So something to keep in mind.
So, so we um for the um code now or the law uh concern that was once the SB nine forty-two, we have a maintenance of effort that we have to keep up. Um and that is paid through our, that one dollar, I believe.
We have two funding sources um for that. We have our transfer of the lodging tax that goes to our tourism fund. So by code, sixty percent of our lodging tax revenue has to be used for marketing tourism purposes. And then, as you mentioned, we have an additional two-dollar tax, fifty percent of which we retain. Those are the two funding sources that would go towards that that uh maintenance of effort money.
And are we going to make that this year with our with the um decrease that we're seeing there?
For fiscal year twenty, we are projecting um to have a shortfall in both the lodging tax and the two-dollar tax.
And by how much, do you know?
Dollar amount, I'd have to get you because it's three-fifths of the of the sixty percent.
Okay. So because we're gonna need to discuss on how we're gonna move ahead with that because if then we take that out of other funds, then we're we're double dipping the taxpayer, basically.
Yes, when we when we did the fiscal year twenty budget, um when we estimate that revenue, we always make sure we don't spend every dollar that we estimate because it is an estimate. Um and so we typically have a contingency in our tourism fund. When we were presenting the budget to you back in April, there was a sufficient fund balance in the tourism fund for the payment that we'd already made for fiscal year twenty. The concern would be fiscal year twenty-one. And again, not knowing how long this will continue and also not knowing at that time that Busch Gardens and Water Country would not be reopening, we have to monitor that very closely because we would not have a fund balance in the tourism fund in twenty-one.
Yeah, so is we don't have, we don't know if they'll be able to open for Hollow Screen, which probably is more I I'm guessing here, but probably more local in Virginia. I don't know how many people are gonna be traveling here. I don't and I don't know that they'd share that information with us. Christmas, if they're able to do Christmas town, might be a little bit more of a of a kick into our lodging, but okay, thank you.
Absolutely.
This year is um, you know, pretty much what's done, basically. Um this coming year is where we're gonna really take our hit as we're coming forward. And that's that's my biggest concern is, do we know um or do we have any projection of what, I don't know, it's a crystal ball, so it's it's that's our loss we may have countywide on the upcoming year or what we may project.
Yeah, new developments are coming in daily. Of course, we had programmed a ten percent reduction. Um and we didn't do that straight across the board. We looked at every revenue a little differently. Um we took bigger reductions on the lodging meals and sales tax. Um as you know, the governor has just today placed additional restrictions on Hampton Roads. That is something that we need to go back and look at. We have to revisit our projections, knowing now that the restaurants in particular will be more limited. Um so again, because we get our revenues in arrears, we won't really see July's money until the end of August. And that will give us some insight as that additional impact.
That'll be good, just, you know, for for schools and everything else because it's gonna impact all of us as far as with Busch Gardens not being open and the meals that are not being eaten and lodging and that sort of thing. It does affect the, as you know, very well, you know, it does affect our bottom line. And um, you know, I know we agreed to to the ten percent, but if we can keep a close eye on that and as quickly as I know you're a month behind before you can get anything to even get to us, but as quickly as we can get that information so that we can start figuring out leadership roles or where we may need to adjust something if it is, if it does become worse, because I think most of us were hoping we wouldn't be out of this, but we'd be a little further than we are, and now we're going back again. And um, you know, so it's it's really hard to predict, you know, for for you and for us as well on where we're gonna be and how much how much of an impact it's gonna be on next year's budget. That's that's what I'm worried with most is next year's budget. They're just coming years' budget.
Right, and those revenues in particular don't come in evenly, meaning we don't receive one twelfth of that annual amount. Uh we receive the majority of those taxes in these summer months. And so it will have a bigger impact now than it will likely have in the winter.
Yeah.
Do we expect the school, so the schools have made their decision on virtual for nine, from what I understand. So do we expect them to tell us what they're going to do as far as um with the employees that this impacts? Because there are so many then that 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 they won't need um because of day-to-day operations all being virtual. So do you have any indication that they'll um be discussing that?
Yes, I've reached out to my counterpart at the school division, the CFO. I know Rebecca and I have a phone call tomorrow with several school division employees to specifically discuss that. Um any CARES money that they may be receiving. There is been talk of another, uh a fourth package of federal dollars that would be coming out, a part of which would provide funding to school divisions for their virtual needs. Um and so that as well as how they've ended fiscal year twenty. Um my understanding is that it is a more optimistic picture than where they were a couple of months ago, primarily driven by the sales tax for education. I believe in their original estimates, they had programmed no further collections. Um we're actually seeing not only that they're collecting money, they're they have an increase over last year. So I do expect their picture to be a little bit more optimistic, and I imagine that'll be part of the discussion about this year as well as how to use that year-end funding. Um again, I know two million of that uh year-end funding had already been set aside in the twenty-one budget um to come to the county and then the county to revert it back to the school division. But anything above that, I imagine would be part of a bigger discussion.
The CARES Act, we we put X amount into the schools to make them whole as much as possible. Did they get any CARES Act money separate from what James City County put in? Did they get a separate line item from the state that that? I don't know about.
I know that they've received, uh we provided with, we provided them with one point seven million dollars that was used specifically for laptops for the virtual learning. I do believe that they received their own allocation of funding that was also to be used for virtual, although for a different purpose than laptops um back in the spring. Again, that's part of the discussion that we'll have tomorrow. One of our questions is, what have you received? What's in the pipeline and what can it be used for? One of the guidelines with all this CARES money is you cannot use it for the same thing twice. Um and now, one of the restrictions that came out today is we have to report to the federal government how we're spending the dollars, and we have to certify that we're not using the money twice. So that applies to not just the school division, but if we provide money to the school division, we have to report as well. So that'll be part of the ongoing discussion going forward and how we monitor to make sure that they don't double dip, even if it's accidental.
Right. And and if you could after tomorrow, um know what that number is, if you could just email it to the board so that this board knows what the school board received over and above what we've, you know, allocated for them as well.
Yes, and it would also require an amendment to their budget, um because it wasn't in their original budget document. It would be something that their board would have to take action on as well.
Mr. Hippel, one thing I would add, you you'd asked about reporting and and Ms. Day had suggested maybe a monthly report to the board and then come to the so a written report monthly so you can sort of see how we compare. And then we'll come to a work session every couple of months, maybe every other work session just to give you an update as long, until we're sort of back to normal, whatever that might be, so that we can share with you each, well, very regularly where we are and how we think we're tracking. So we're concerned and watching this year as well.
All right. So we'll get started in our discussion about the CARES Act funding specifically. As you know, Virginia received three point one billion dollars of CARES Act funding from the federal government. Fifty-five percent of that um allocation was based on the state's population and to be used toward the state's efforts. Forty-five percent of that three point one billion allocation was based on local populations. Back on June the first, we received our first allocation of that forty-five percent. Uh we received half of that money. And at that point in time, the state the state had not decided how they would allocate the remaining fifty percent. It is my understanding that today, uh the governor did announce that he would be allocating the other fifty percent of the forty-five percent to the localities. Um there is some additional requirements of that money um that was not required with the first go-round. Specifically, they are requiring localities to certify that they would abide by the federal regulations. And they also have to complete a survey, an online survey, um discussing how the dollars have been spent year-to-date and submitting documentation. Doing those two requirements, um the due date, I believe, is August the tenth. We are to receive our allocation of the other six point seven million dollars within five days. So obviously, the sooner we do that, the sooner we get our cash. The good news is we have been closely following. You'll have an update today on how much money we've spent year-to-date, so we're ready to submit that information, and we think we can turn that around pretty quickly. I have not received any further information on whether it can be used for any type of revenue shortfalls or whether or not they are um intending to extend the deadline for the use of that. Um currently, that is December the third, December thirtieth. Those are the two things that we obviously need most desperately. Um in terms of criteria for spending those dollars, that's been provided to us from the U.S. Treasury Department. Um there are three criteria. In order to be eligible for utilizing that funding, it has to be expenditures that relate to the public health emergency uh with respect to the coronavirus. Uh those funds cannot be accounted for in the current budget. And the expenditures have to occur between the period March the first and December thirtieth, twenty twenty. Currently, the those dollars also cannot be used to replace revenue shortfalls.
Grab you right there. The um the timeline to December thirty-first, is that included the second amount of money has to be spent at that time? Or do they give us a little bit longer on the second?
At this point, I haven't received any information that they've extended it, although I know that that is the desire of the localities.
Is that a federal government? Is that a federal government, uh, decision or a state government decision?
I don't know.
But I will, uh, if I, if I can just interject, uh, um, I've been following what's been happening in Congress and of course, they're taking their time to. To address this, but, uh, in both the House bill that, uh, would, uh, approve about a three billion dollar, a three trillion dollar. Um, additional funding to address the pandemic, uh, impact. And the Senate bill, um, that is about a one trillion dollar amount there. Um, in both of them, there are things that would make things better for us. Um, in the House bill, there is something I think maybe two or three hundred billion dollars. That is directed to localities, uh, to basically use to to make up for revenue shortfall. Uh, and, uh, that would go a pretty long, a pretty far way in in addressing a lot of communities' needs. And the objective is especially to, you know, keep people on payroll and and not exacerbate what's already a very bad unemployment problem. Um, to keep, um, frontline services, um, available, whether it's. Education or public safety, uh, health services and so forth. Um, in the Senate bill, where it does not, I believe, provide additional funding for state and local governments. But what it does is it extends the December thirtieth deadline into twenty twenty-one. And it allows up to twenty-five percent of the CARES Act money. Uh, the money that's already approved, the money that's coming to us, to be spent for, uh, replacement of revenue shortfalls. So, um, I think it's going to be important to watch what happens in the next couple of, in the next week or so. Because I think that's the timeline they're operating under. Um, but either way, there's at least some hopeful signs in both pieces of of legislation. That would, uh, ease things a little bit for us.
What would be great is if they could go back and amend the others piece of legislation.
That is what they're gonna do. That's what the Senate, the Senate one does. Senate one basically says, um, we think that there's still CARES Act money to be spent by state and local governments. And they're restricting what they can spend it on, so we're going to loosen that. Allow them to spend up to twenty-five percent of it on revenue shortfall and extend the deadline. The House one actually provides a very significant additional chunk of money, uh, that could be used for, um, revenue replacement.
Yeah, and that's my understanding as well. I did read somewhere that, um, there was discussion of extending the timeline until twenty twenty-two. Um, and that there would be a requirement, uh, under the revenue shortfall replacement program, you would still need to substantiate and tie that to COVID. Directly as opposed to just a bad projection, bad budget projection.
Pretty easy for us to do though, given the 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 revenue shortfalls that we're experiencing.
In terms of the uses of those funds, um, what we've done here is break it down into the major categories. Um, both what we've actually spent, actual expenses year-to-date, that's the two point nine million dollar column. As well as commitments that we've actually made in terms of purchase orders or known commitments at this time. Um, and then accumulate those costs to show what we have spent as well as commitments year-to-date. Again, um, we've received about six point seven million and in total, uh, we have about four point seven million dollars that's even been. Either been spent or committed. Uh, the largest chunk, of course, was the amount that we did pay to the school division, one point seven million dollars. Again, that was used for laptops for students to allow for their remote learning environment. We also provided half a million dollars of business relief. Of course, that's being, um, operated by the Greater Williamsburg Partnership. Via the Virginia Thirty-Day Fund. Um, for personal protective equipment, this is where we have included items such as gloves, masks, you know, face shields. Um, just staff's everyday needs, um, in the office as well as our first responders, um, in terms of their equipment needs. About half a million dollars there. For payroll, we've incurred expenditures or commitments of about eight hundred eighty-four thousand dollars. This has primarily been in the areas of the first responders, fire, police, AMT. Um, police and the way of monitoring the social distances, um, and their intervening at businesses. Also, when businesses were reopening, um, my understanding is that they assisted with that process and making sure the buildings were secure and safe. Because they had been closed for some period of time. Also included in that number is the new building security and custodial superintendent. That was a position that originally was requested during the budget process, but that was postponed until January. As part of the budget reductions, we were able to utilize COVID-funded to go ahead and hire that position. I believe it was, um, approved at the May, the May, uh, board meeting. And also included in that number is the, um, additional leave for employees, um, related to COVID. And also the additional requirements for FMLA that are COVID-related as well. Under the public health measures, um, the estimate there is about six hundred thirty-six thousand dollars. This includes things such as the additional barriers that we put in place for social distancing. As well as some signs, you may have seen the tents out at the treasurer's office. Um, those types of measures so that we could again communicate safely with the public. This also is the category that includes the waiver of the convenience fees for the online payments, um, for our citizens. Again, that is another area where we are billed in arrears. Um, we do estimate, uh, between March, when it was put into place. And if it were to be extended as a result of COVID through December thirtieth. That the total cost for that would be about six hundred thousand dollars. That's another cost that does not come in evenly. As you know, our payments for taxes are due June fifth and December fifth. So we always see a huge in, um, influx of credit card fees during that time, and then it kind of levels back off from there. Cleaning and hand sanitizer is pretty self-explanatory. We spent about a hundred seventy-eight thousand there. Um, that again is disinfectant supplies, custodial services, additional cleaning of the buildings. Um, sanitizer dispensers and also some equipment that we installed in our HVAC systems as well. Medical supplies, a hundred thirteen thousand dollars. This is primarily for some temperature scanners and related equipment, uh, medical equipment. We've incurred costs of a hundred thirty thousand dollars for IT-related software and equipment. This was allowing, um, employees the ability to telework and conduct remote meetings such as through the Zoom process. And then finally, in community assistance for three thousand dollars, most of that expenditure to date has been for sheltering efforts, um, for our residents. So in summary, again, we've received six point seven million dollars as an upfront advance cash payment. Um, expended almost three million dollars year-to-date, ongoing commitments of one point seven million. Um, that leaves us with a balance of about two million dollars to spend between now and December thirtieth. And finally, just a list of considerations, um, some of which, um, Ms. Van Root will explore further with you tonight. Um, the following is a list of considerations that we would, uh, look to you to fund, uh, with the rate, remaining two million dollars. And now that we are aware of additional funding coming our way, perhaps using those funds for these purposes as well. We're currently evaluating our facilities for renovations to provide for adequate social distancing. Between employees amongst each other as well as their interaction with the public. There, of course, is a project in the works to extend internet service to other parts of the county. Um, again, to help with the students and their distance learning virtual environment efforts. There's been some discussion about, um, an employee sick bank to allow employees, um, to utilize a sick bank, um, if they were impacted by COVID. And there is a potential need, um, for childcare, uh, for the employees and the community, um, based on the return to school decision. That, of course, was recently made by the school division. We've heard from several non-area or several area nonprofits who are seeking assistance due to, due to a significant increase in demand. From the community for their services. Um, we've had lots of discussions and again, Ms. Van Root will cover some of that tonight. Um, but a lot of discussion about what that process would look like and again, how we would monitor it. Um, and there is again, another avenue that, um, businesses and nonprofits can pursue directly with the late, with the state. Um, called Rebuild Virginia. That was also just recently announced in the last few days. Um, and that's something we can talk about tonight as well. And that's it for me. Um, I was going to shift it back over to Ms. Van Root to discuss some of those things in a little bit more detail.
Um, so in particular, I'm going to talk about, um, childcare assistance and support for our, um, nonprofits who've seen an increase in demand. Um, for for services. Um, when it comes to childcare, we obviously know what the schools have decided to do, um, to do the virtual learning. Um, so along with that, um, there comes the need for parents to work. Um, so we have the need for, um, county employees, school employees, as well as individuals in our community who need to continue to work. So the question is, um, where can students go that's safe during the day? Um, where they can also get their virtual learning needs met. Um, so we are aware of several organizations, um, private entities in the county who are starting to, um, offer programs. So there certainly will be some things available. However, looking at some of the cost of those programs and individuals who we know, um, already maybe struggling financially. Um, we wanted to discuss the possibility of, you know, expanding potentially, um, our Ret Connect program to maybe able to offer that. So we would need support for that program as well as support to pay for that program. You know, not everybody has fared well economically in this. And so, um, we're looking at lower-income families as well as, you know, employees for both the school and for the county. Who didn't anticipate, um, that cost in the fall. And we all anticipate somewhat summer costs, but certainly not the fall cost. So we want to, um, discuss with you all your, um, thoughts regarding, um, using funds. You know, both to set up a program and to potentially offer assistance, um, for individuals who need access to that program. Um, so I'll go through the second and then we can discuss things both of those.
Can I grab that one first?
Sure, absolutely.
Since we're on it, um. It it's it. We're paying for our schools and they shut the schools down. For safety and and to keep the kid, children's sakes and that that sort of thing and our young adults. But then we're going to put them in daycare. What's the difference in a daycare and a school? The only difference is school, they're learning and daycare, they're, they're going to have to come up to the. Standard of the schools to try to get them to learn virtually in that sort of thing. And now we're paying for two items instead of the one. And common sense pulls into my head when when we're, okay, let's shut the schools down. But we can still gather the children in daycare. Well, that doesn't make sense at all to me. And I know why we have to, because parents have to go to work. They've got to support the family and and I I understand that part of it, but I don't understand why we're. Paying twice for the same thing. And when. We're, we're still going to pay for the schools and the teachers and virtual learning and everything else. But the students can't go there, but they can congregate in daycare and virtually learn. If they can congregate in daycare, they should be able to congregate in school. And that's just a common sense thing to me and it and and I I just don't understand that. Because it's it's putting more pressure on the county. I know we have the the COVID money, which I don't mind spending on daycare and and I don't mind spending on the things we need to spend. But we have to pay this back one way or the other some way, maybe not James City County as a whole, but. And our federal taxes and all that. We're gonna, we're gonna pay this back one way or the other. It's not free money. But kind of. That puts me in a weird place because we're paying once, now we're paying twice. And then do we decide that, okay, now, you know, what's what's the next shoe? And it's not y'all. Y'all are trying to figure out how do we deal with what we're, the cards were dealt. And I agree with that, so it's it's nothing, it's nothing y'all are doing, it's just. It's just, it seems to me that, um. The common sense thing is not as common as it used to be.
I had a follow-up to that as well. When you say school employees, so are teachers? What what is the school system's, uh, I don't, would you call it pro- policy? If if a, if a teacher is supposed to be teaching during the day. Is she going or he going to be able to have their children at home with them? Or is this the childcare that we're, who in the school system are we providing the childcare for? And, um. So how do we prioritize? School, county, community, because there's only going to be so many spots. Going back to what Mr. Hippel has said, a childcare worker, what, makes eight to ten dollars an hour? And we're putting them at risk, but we're not gonna, we're not going to go to school. So how are we going to adequately protect our childcare, our Ret Connect people? To make sure that 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 they're safe too? What do we do if our Ret Connect employee gets COVID? How many backups do we have so that we can keep operating this childcare system? Um, because we don't need to to do it and then all of a sudden we can't open because we have. We've got an outbreak or we've got an employee that has COVID and so they can't come in and and we're short. I I don't know if maybe Ret Connect is, I don't know a lot about it since I've been on this board. I knew more about it when I was on the school board, I think. But how deep is our team there? Are we doing this in schools? Because that's where Ret Connect is is now. Um, so that's a a couple of my, you know, I worry about the the health and safety of our employees. I'd like, which school employees are we going to be doing? How are we going to prioritize between those three people that you want to provide childcare for? I mean, quality childcare is very, very difficult to get. Um, and it's it's a problem pre-COVID. Um, and now, w- we are in a very tough position because parents do need to get back to work. I'm sure employers are wanting, you know, things to start getting back. Um, but what are their, uh, with with school? And I don't believe most parents, I I I do take, um. I I I've been a little irritated by the discussion that, oh, parents think schools daycare. I don't think that at all. I think pa- because parents, most working parents, um, whether you work inside or outside the home, you still have the before and the after. You have six to seven hours during the day that you have a reasonable expectation that once your child turns six years old. They're going to be okay. They're going to be in school. They're going to be learning. They're going to be taken care of by safe people. And so I don't think that parents think it's day, I think they think their child's going to be receiving an education. And now that's been taken away and that's that's major. And they're got to figure that out for nine weeks and if that, I mean, I'd like to know. What's the plan if they, we don't go back after nine weeks? So do you know how you're going to prioritize or what the, what the, what school employees it would be that would?
So I will try to unpack that.
Okay, sorry.
No, 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 it's, and these are all good discussions and these are all discussions that we've had internally and that we plan to continue to have. So we do have a meeting tomorrow, as Ms. Day mentioned, um, with school and. People, um, county people, um, where we'll be discussing all of those things. And so at this time, I don't know what the school's expectation is as far as the teachers and what they'll be able to do. I think when all of this started and throughout all of this, every employer I've seen has been as accommodating as they can be. So I certainly think, um, the little that I know about the plan, um, for the educational delivery is that. There will be certain teachers, certain classes, and I think it depends on the grade and the teacher. Um, some will be real-time, others will be recorded. Um, I don't believe people will necessarily be penalized if their child can't attend something at ten o'clock on a Tuesday. Because, you know, they weren't available. So I do think, I believe our school is to be as accommodating as they can be, both for students and for staff. So going into that, that's that's what I know. So I think tomorrow, the discussion will be, like you said, what is the expectation? And so what do school employees need to do? Um, the same thing for the county. There's certain county employees who, you know, can telework. And so, for example, my own staff, I've said, you know, if you can't do something between eight to five, I just need you to get the job done. And everybody has gotten the job done, whether it's eight o'clock, AM or PM. And so I think it's it's different depending on the position. So we certainly need to be mindful of what that expectation is for them. So that's, I guess, question one. I don't, there are a few things in there. Um, as far as, you know, supplementing or having these daycare or childcare, um. Programs take the place of learning, that's not what the intent is. I think, you know, parents are not teachers either. So I think the expectation that you're in your home. And the child is on the laptop or doing something, you know, the parents versus the Ret Connect person. you know, the parents versus the Ret Connect person, would they do the same job? Probably, you know, because it's really about, you know, doing the best you can to facilitate that learning when you're not a teacher. And so I think the schools are doing the best they can to facilitate that learning when nobody asks for this. And so I think we're all trying to say, we're gonna have access to these learning opportunities. But every family is gonna receive that differently. And so when they did the survey and they asked families to choose virtual or not, you know, before all, before they made the decision, um, I don't know all the details, but I do believe it was a fairly large number of families that chose virtual only. So whether those families chose it because they felt it was safer or whether those families chose it because they didn't have a parent that worked outside of the home or didn't have a parent who was employed and so could monitor, maybe that's the case. So I do think with these programs, certainly there have been daycares that never closed. When this happened on March thirteenth, they just kept it rolling. And so I, I have not heard of a significant hotspot or a significant outbreak that occurred. But I do believe that's because the size was low. There was PPE going and I can't say this with certainty, this is all speculation, that individuals who sent their children, sent their children because they had to send their children. And so I think that's still going to occur. We know in the fall, there's families out there who parents can, can stay home. And I'm gonna say, cause I said it earlier, sometimes services staying home. So I think there may be some families who say, I don't need to access a program. I'm not gonna send my child just to send my child. So I think if those who truly have the need, send their child, the hope is that we keep these numbers low. Because I believe at the end of the day with schools, everybody sends their child. So you can't keep the numbers low. We all know classroom sizes, because we had this discussion months ago, you know, needed to be expanded and, and they were already crowded. So you take an already crowded classroom and you put COVID on top of that, that may be where some of this decision occurred. Again, the schools were talking with the health department. They were talking with all the experts. I'm not the expert when it comes to the health, but that's what I believe. So that's, I, I think as we go on with this, there are programs that are already set up for the fall that have said, we're limiting it to this number. And when we have your child come in, we're not gonna be teaching your child because we're not teachers. We're gonna be setting the stage and supporting your child, your kindergarten or your first grader who can't read to, you know, get on the laptop and do what they can. But I think, my concern is that if we don't offer a lower cost program or we don't offer the programs that we can, we run the risk of having families not have an option. You know, not every family can afford a hundred and fifty dollars a week. Um, not every family, you know, has the ability to pick and choose based on convenience. So I think if we are able to offer a lower cost, safe alternative, we won't run the risk of having children alone or older siblings trying to help younger siblings.
So, so what, what type of fee structure are you looking at?
Before, before we get to that, could I ask you just a, a simple question about what's, what is typically the enrollment for the Ret Connect program?
I'm gonna look to my counterpart, Mr. Counterfax here.
That, that gives us some sense of the, of the scale of, of the issue we're dealing with here. It's not everybody. It, it's, it's not like we're, we're.
But isn't it going to grow?
Yeah.
That's what we're talking about.
Well, we're not sure yet, right? Because as, as we heard, you know, I mean, Ret Connect is something that parents have been used to utilizing as a source of childcare for years, right?
Yeah, and I think, you know, we've got a, an example right now with our summer camps. Which typically we'll have eight hundred to register for them. And we've gotten just over two hundred and fifty register and then they sign up for weekly attendance. And our weekly attendance numbers, you know, we're down seventy percent from last summer. So I think part of it is, we really don't know the demand of what is gonna be needed. The assumption is, we're gonna be down. Uh, we're not gonna au- offer, we're not, probably not gonna be able to offer before and after school. Who would, who would attend that if there is no school? So what are our options? You know, do we do a full day program? We do know that several, um, private providers are gearing up and nonprofits to offer full day programs. Some with mentors there, assistants to help with that curriculum. And so tomorrow, the meeting is really to say, here's where we are. We know what's coming. Virtual program or virtual education for nine weeks. What do we need to do? What can we do? Whether it's in the school facility or at the rec center or what sites? And then what is the demand for it? Uh, and so I think that's what the meeting is.
Excuse me, Mr. Counterfax, could I interject? I don't wanna lose, um, lose my train of thought on this. If, if these programs can take place in a school facility, like you just said, to Ms. Larson or Mr. Hippel's point, if, I, I can't remember who said it. If we're gonna do, provide that kind of, um, um, helping to set the stage to guide the, the children through virtual, then why can't they just be in school? I, I, I'm missing the connection here. It doesn't, to me personally, it does not make sense. If they're gonna be in these facilities anyway, then why aren't they in school? So to me, a- and if we've got private organizations that are per- doing this, then why, if it's unsafe in school, then it's unsafe everywhere. So this doesn't make sense to me. And also, uh, Ms. Counterfax, I don't know if you're gonna be participating in the discussion tomorrow, but if this is something as a result, um, of the schools not opening and if the schools are getting their own sources of cares money, which I'm not sure if they're getting more or if they've utilized this extra amount that Mr. Hippel brought up this evening, perhaps it should be the school division that figures out how to pay for this childcare. So maybe that's something that you can add to your discussion tomorrow. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you, but I had to jump in while I was thinking about.
Well, well, I'm, I'm still trying to, to get a sense of the, of the scale of this. And, and, and I think that does answer some of the question that's being raised here. Because we, when we're talking about reopening the schools, we're talking about facilities that are designed to have twenty elementary school children, twenty-five middle school children in a classroom, not what is likely to be more like six or eight, um, under the supervision of a, a childcare worker.
We don't know that, though.
I know. That's why I'm asking the question.
But we can limit that.
Right.
So what would we limit it to?
And, and how, and how, and how do you draw the line?
It's each, in the first place, you had to jump in and ask your question. So I'd like to, because I, I, I'd like to know how we're gonna protect the Ret Connect person that we're put, we're, we're, we're removing, which I, I, I can't answer that question about, that's a school decision there about why we can do it in the schools, but we can't, they can't meet. I, I, that's up to them. But how deep is our Ret Connect team? Because we're putting, now, we're, we're, we're saying we can't bring the teacher in. That's a decision that's been made. We're gonna bring Ret Connect in to, to fill that, for the childcare's piece. How are we gonna protect them?
So right now, we're offering Ret Connect program in the schools.
For the summer?
For the summer.
And, and you've, and that's been?
And so we've limited it to a maximum of fifty based on the size of the school facilities that we're able to access. Gymnasiums, cafeterias, classrooms, we're able to.
Is everybody in together?
Keep the social distancing, uh, to meet the requirements that they have for childcare. We are licensed, we're following the guidelines. So because we limit and can limit the capacity where, I don't believe the schools can, once they open the doors, it's everybody. So that gives us a little bit of advantage and we can spread out to give the social distancing. So that are two of the things that I would say to address why we could possibly do a program and the schools couldn't is because we can limit it. We can exceed the capacity limitations and we can cut the registration off and whatever that maximum is if we need to. I still go back to, I'm not sure we know the demand or if we're gonna need to. Because if you look at the people, the participants now compared to last summer, it's down seventy percent. I can tell you what it's gonna be when, you know, when we go to this full day program during the school year. My assumption is it's, it's gonna be down. Typically, we'll have eight hundred in our before and after school program too, that are registered. And we have four hundred to four fifty every week. I don't think those numbers are gonna be there, but I don't think we'll know until we get to.
That takes me back to my, then how do you prioritize? Cause that's not a lot of spots. So you've got the school, the county and the community. So how are you, I mean, is it gonna be, so say it's, say it's fifty at Matoka.
But I, I, I think Mr. Counterfax is saying that he's not expecting the demands to be.
We don't know that. What, what is so threatening about this question? I don't understand. I'm just saying, so say it is fifty. It's say, it's our, it's fifty and we have, and we have seventy-five apply to Set Matoka. How do we decide who's getting those spots? I, I, I think it's worthy of discussion.
Well, I think it would be similar to our, everything that we do that maxes, a lot of our programs max out. It's the registration process, the date we start. And then we have a waiting list and then we get to your, uh, scenario of, okay, you got twenty-five more people that want in Matoka than we've, than we can handle based on that. So what do we do with those twenty-five if that was to pan out?
So it's kind of like.
How we would handle any.
First come, first served. It doesn't matter if you're with the schools, the, the county or the community.
Registration.
Just gonna open it up.
Well, that's, we haven't made that decision yet, but that's a valid question. It's something we need to think about. But if we look at our standard operating procedures for any of our programs, it's, you saw, we have a start date and an end date and it's full. And then a waiting list starts and we figure out, can we handle those participants? Either in another program, move them to another site, expand the site based on availability.
Okay. I just wanna make sure, we, we're being told that we're doing this to, to help us. We don't know yet who at the schools is going to need it, because we don't know if teachers are gonna be able to have their kids at home with them yet. We haven't gotten that decision from the schools. County employees, we're not, and then the possibly, um, I wanna say low income, uh, how, community members that are having a tough time. I saw that the four H club is doing something. It's a hundred and forty. That's a lot of money. So we're looking to help serve someone that perhaps cannot do that. If, if the people that have the means to get to the internet faster to grab the spots. And then, and then, and then we've said, you know, we're, we're trying to help the community member that is not able to pay, say, a hundred and forty dollars a week, which I think it's great that the four H club is doing that. And there are people out there that can afford that. But how do we make sure that we're, that we're serving all three p- that's, that's, and I, and maybe you'll stand up there in a month and say, yeah, we didn't have that, you know, because families have adjusted since March, people are working from home. But then I worry we have the opposite problem and people are like, okay, I've got an opportunity to go back to work now and I've got affordable childcare for my child. And we're over, we've got more than we thought we were gonna be. And so how do we, how do we divvy that up?
And one of the scenarios that we have right now as far as payment is, you know, if they qualify on their income, then they'll get, uh, a discount based on what we have in our program right now. And, uh, so I think that's one of the options, whether it's cares money or we can discount it to those that actually need the discount. And for those that don't qualify, they would pay full price, whatever that may be.
You haven't worked that piece out, yeah.
But that's what we already have.
So could I, could I, I'm sorry, there's a delay. I'm, I apologize for buttoning like this. But is part of the discussion gonna be not just on who can afford it and who cannot? It may be those children who emotionally cannot afford to be away from their friends anymore? Is that part of the discussion as well? And then how do you divide all of that up? Because I know of a whole lot of kids that need to be around other kids and need to be playing right now. And they're all, um, having issues. So is that part of the, um, discussion as well? Not just the income, but their emotional wellbeing as well.
Well, I think that's something that we certainly have to consider. But I think, you know, first and foremost, it's about, um, safety and ensuring that, you know, kids are not home alone and that children who, of parents who have to work are, are able to be someplace. Um, I do think there may be, um, individuals and families who would want to send their children for that social, emotional learning. Um, but I do know there's, you know, clubs and, um, you know, other studios and private things that are offering those recreational activities. So, you know, certainly that may be a part of it. Um, but, you know, I think when we look at the school employees and I think we look at the county employees, there's some employees who are already have a lot of anxiety about what are they gonna do? And so I think, um, you know, being able to offer programs or access to programs, you know, one of the things I think we need to discuss is would we assist employees in paying for it? It's certainly not an expense that anybody anticipated, anticipated needing, maybe before and after school, but certainly not a full day. And so that, that's part of the discussion is that, do we assist county employees? I know there may be some opportunities, you know, pre-tax. I know Mistake talked through that.
Yeah, that, that is one of the considerations that we discussed is if we provide this as a benefit to county employees or school employees, it is considered a taxable fringe benefit. Um, the first five thousand dollars is tax-free, however, it still has to be reported on their W-2. So there's lots of technicals to this. We would have to have a mechanism to track that. We have to determine what the fair mech- fair market value of that service is. If we're using COVID money, are we charging them or is it free because we're using COVID money? Or is COVID money what we use for the low, the lower income families? To what extent are we subsidizing? So there's, there's a lot of things that would have to be worked out.
Do you do a sliding scale for employees of the county? Wouldn't like, like he does, is that, is that possible? I mean, how, how, and then how do you get into the confidentiality? I guess, I guess they self-report. Do the schools have enough bandwidth for, I'm assuming? Because they'll keep all that on, because now that you're gonna have the kids, that they're gonna bring their lap, their little laptops with them to do their virtual. So I'm assuming the schools will keep all the bandwidth rolling so that they'll be able to do all of that virtual work.
Right. And that will definitely need to be part of the discussion. You know, I know I had already put, um, Mr. Page with IRM on, on notice about the discussion because certainly having the schools, you know, ramp up or, or, you know, I guess the question would be, and I think, um, Parks and Rec is already set up for this. You know, we see what the demand is and then they see how many sites they need. So I think, you know, starting with a couple of sites and then expanding rather than all sites and then contracting, I mean, that's part of the program discussion. So there's the program setup discussions, there's what else is available in the community. There's financial assistance for individuals, you know, employees and those in the community. There's a lot that needs to go into this discussion and unfortunately, we can't start it until tomorrow. Folks who know the answers, so I, you know.
I don't have an issue with helping, I mean, with a sliding scale for county employees as well. I don't know how you're gonna work all that out in the way you're talking about. That seems rather comp, you know. Um, but I do, going back to the one question, you know, is it all of our cares money? Or does the school pick up if, if it's their side?
And, and when it is a joint school system, so the city, I would think, would wanna be part of that discussion as well.
Yes, and I did it by counterpart from Wingsbury Kingdom Services to participate in the meeting. And, you know, there's regional entities that are discussing this. I mean, childcare as a essential service has been discussed from day one. And so our regional smart beginnings group, you know, there's advocacy groups out there going childcare has never closed. There are, you know, doctors and firefighters, everybody, and there are people who've been working this whole time who have young children. And so I think we're just continuing on, how do we support those individuals? And I think if we message it correctly and if we say, we understand everybody would like to get their children out and about, what we're really talking about, and that's gonna be challenging, is how do we prioritize those for whom there really isn't another solution? And that really needs to be the initial discussion. Um, although we would like for everybody to have that emotional, social interaction, there's some essential needs that really childcare needs that we need to discuss.
Evan. Little tough time with, with some of the, some of the stuff. I know safety is always our first issue and our teachers do a great job. Um, but I go by the saying is, don't reinvent the wheel, just roll it down the hill. Fifty-two percent of our budget goes into the school system, fifty-two percent. And now we're trying to figure out ways to get more money to figure out what do we do with our students? In the school that they say they can't go into, but we can put them into this. And if I'm sitting on the sofa at home, I'm going, what in the heck are they doing? What is going on in there? And why aren't we looking at as far as the schools? It can't be an open or shut case. And I know y'all have nothing to schools and we don't either. But it can't be an opener, we either open or don't open. What if we open with ten students in every classroom, six students in every classroom? What if we open on Monday is Powhatan, Tuesday is Stonehouse, Wednesday is Jamestown? And, and, and operate that way and, and social distance? Why can't the other four days you virtually learn, but you have a chance to be with other students, with the teachers, with the school system? They're guiding you because with with three at home. My wife has a blast trying to get through all the stuff coming in from the school system. And where is this and what is that and going online and trying to figure out with no internet and using hotspots? And then you get kicked off and then you're back on. And I feel sorry for the people that don't have hotspots in our community that can't keep up. And those kids are being lost. That's what we should be concentrating on.
Well, and maybe these children would be better served, you know, in a program where they can get access to that. I mean, certainly that's
The problem is I can't get on the internet to get onto your program. I mean, I've I'll figure it out, but the the person is out there that that's working all day long and doesn't have a hotspot and doesn't have the ability. They they can't get, and then by the time they figure it out and they get to it, it's filled up. Where we've got us, we've got all these schools. And I'm not saying open it full, but we've got all these schools we can utilize and let's limit the classes. Let's look at the school and say, how many students could we put in but socially distance? And how many students do we have full time? And what is the division? It's a mathematical figure. What is the division of that? And what will that look like to? And maybe they've done that. It would be nice if they would put that information out instead of not because it the the parents I'm talking with and dealing with, it drives them crazy. Not that the school system's not doing a good job, not they're trying to be as safe as they're possible. And I'm not ragging on the school system. So I don't want any parents or teachers out there think I am or this board, anybody is ragged. We're trying to figure this out with them. I think one thing we're missing is a joint meeting between the two bodies. And I've suggested that to the school board body as well, is is come together because the CARES Act is going to cover it. And hopefully, like John was saying earlier, that there's more funds coming in and and we'll get more funds and and we'll get through this. But I don't know right now. And I really don't trust anybody in Richmond or Washington right now. And I don't know what they say that's going to come down here is going to come down here till it's in the bank. And when we have it in the bank and we say, okay, we've got the money in the bank, we can do this. It's it's, it's very hard to have all that space in those schools. Have all those buses, have all that staff, fifty percent, two percent of our budget goes to that. And then not utilize them, not to the fullest, but a little further than we are now. The teachers love to see the kids. I know they do. They enjoy seeing them. I'm sure when they're sitting there on their computer trying to get to the kids and and tell them this and that, I'm sure it's driving the teachers crazy. It has to. Because they're, they they want hands-on. They want to show the kids and they're doing a great job. So how do we do that? But but be safe. And I'd love that to be part of conversation tomorrow is, you know, we've got all this facility. And I know people are out there and and the public are looking at this going, why don't you utilize what you have?
Well, let me say a couple of things. I think, you know, certainly the decisions that the school board made, we know they made with the best information they had. And, you know, when it comes to um, the entry of schools, there's federal laws, you know, free and appropriate education where they can't necessarily turn down folks. So when it comes to the numbers of kids and the the ratio, that's a different story than the programs that we're talking about. So we can limit the ratio to a safe way. And I think by adding an additional program, we um, help improve the equity across the board for folks that need it. Whereas the schools, they're open to everybody. And so, like you said, you know, there could have been other options or maybe other options in the future. But at this point, we can't go backwards. The decisions were made. And even, you know, a couple of weeks ago, when we were talking about getting this meeting going, I suspected, I think most of us suspected that they wouldn't be a hundred percent in person from day one. So regardless of what, whether it was going to be two days, three days, no days, we knew we had to offer something. So this decision to have this meeting was not based on they're not opening in person. The decision to have this meeting was we know there's going to be days that they can't be open, that people still need to work.
Good point. Shouldn't they have had that meeting as well? Shouldn't they have initiated that and said, this is coming? We know this. Should, why should the county initiate?
Well, that's actually kind of how it happened. So we were having these discussions and then um, I was, I heard that they were having the discussion. They were concerned about their staff. Um, and they were trying to decide who was open and what they could offer. And so I reached out to somebody and said, hey, why don't we talk together? Because we're both talking about the same issue. So it did occur that we were both talking about it and we decided to talk together.
And that that will include parents too that are lost in this thing that's going on. I mean, it just won't be
We have to decide first what the program is we're going to offer it, how we're going to offer it, who and and who, you know, who we're going to offer it to. And then I think the next step would probably be to survey, to see county employees. We did a survey several months ago about childcare for county employees. And what we determined in the summer was that there were programs available that weren't full. And so, you know, Ret Connect did offer a summer program, but as you're seeing, it's not full. And I think the summer is different than the fall. You know, certainly school is not childcare, but there are certainly um, opportunities for your child to be somewhere where in the summer, people anticipate that that's not happening. So I do think the fall is a different discussion than the summer and the need of people is different because where some employees maybe were okay in the summer. You know, people are itching to get back and they need people back. So that's why the fall is a different.
Yeah, and I'm I'm not against the the having a safety net for people to go back to work and and be able to have a spot to safely leave your children so that you can go to work. And 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 school's not a baby's, school's a learning facility. So if I've said anything to think it's that, that's not what I'm envisioning. But, you know, you have a safety place. You have qualified teachers. You have people watching over the students and and they're teaching them and they're learning while you're at work doing your stuff. They're instructing, you know, your students and your your children and their students in order to 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 make them, you know, good citizens and and productive in the world. And um, and and I guess that's my biggest frustration is we've got these facilities, they're paid for. We're going to heat and cool them. We're going to clean them. We're going to keep them up. We're going to keep everything safe. We're going to go just like a normal school year would be. And 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 just make it so that, you know, we're safe with the, we could use the auditorium and the gymnasium. We don't have to have, you know, we can go a year without having exercise or something where we can do classrooms in there and and use the chairs and that sort of thing and go go back old school like we used to years ago. And um, you know, it's okay to to go back a little old school in order to to, you know, get everything we need in there. But I think we, just my opinion, not the school boards and and I've got this much knowledge compared to what they're dealing with on the school side of it, but I use a lot of common sense and that we could utilize utilize these buildings and lessen the amount of students in them, utilize the buses and and continue like we normally would in a school year, but just with a limited amount of students. And that way it would solve a lot of things. Now, we would still have to deal with our county stuff as far as and other things as far as where do our county employees, when they drop, you know, they can't take the children to school, it's not their day. How do they, where do they go then? That's a safety net added on to that, which, you know, we would have to deal with. But I think our biggest picture is we've got all these buildings, we're heating and cooling them, keeping the lights on. We're making sure they're clean. We're going to keep them clean because we're schools going to open back up one day. And just limit the size and and have those students and the buses and everything else and keep people employed, keep moving.
I do think the um, perhaps a priority should be that if you don't have Wi-Fi at home. And I don't know how you get the word out about, I mean, Supervisor Hippel brings up a great point. If you don't have Wi-Fi, you may not be able to get into the program. But I I if there's
We can make paper applications available.
If there's any way to to get a student in there that does not have Wi-Fi at home, I think that's really important. So and
And that goes back to the broadband improvements. I don't know what all those details are, but I do know there's conversations about
Yeah, I just don't know if we'll have it in time for for, I mean, I assume you're talking about starting all this like when school would start or as soon as possible. Um, so, yeah, I do think, you know, I don't want to be a, you know, I, this is this is frustrating to me because we've never taken childcare and treated it respectfully as we should have as a as a nation. I mean, we, I always say we treat our youngest and our oldest the worst. And I think that um, this crisis has brought out, you know, what what are we going to do? We're trying to, you know, we're trying to do like a duck underwater and figure all that out. I do appreciate it. But, you know, it does bring up, it does bring up a lot of issues. And um, you know, and I I do want to make sure that that we are looking out for our employee that is working. You know, whether it's three kids or ten, you know, and it sounds as though we've had great success this summer while running that program and that speaks to to Ret Connect and everything they're doing to keep things healthy and safe. So um, I just want to make sure that we're protecting our employees as well as the child, you know, the kids. And then what's the, like, I hope that in this meeting, you're talking about what happens if they don't go back in nine weeks? Because I, you know, I don't want to see, I feel like sometimes we're we're just chasing. And um, like it would have been really great to have this in in June, you know, and be able to, and and that's not, you know, maybe this school decision should have made. I mean, I could have told you what the decision was going to be, probably in March. So anyway, thank you.
And when you're having that discussion, I I really would be interested in knowing if what the schools used their extra allocation for CARES money and what they would be willing and if they're going to be getting more. And if this is about um, affecting um, the school employees or for anyone in the county. I if if this is because school is out, I think to Mr. Hippel's point, we don't need to double dip the taxpayers. And it needs to come from school funding. So I think that's that that's my personal belief in it. And I think that's something we need to um, to look into if y'all could possibly do that as well.
I just don't want to lose sight of the fact that what we're, we're kind of, we have two issues going on. One is the decision about what to do about schools. The other is childcare. That's been an issue for people who are employed for a long time and they've utilized this service for a long time. And now this service needs to be expanded to to cover a broader period of time. Uh, and so uh, when we get to that point, my sense is that we have a need to provide some additional options for parents who have to go to work and don't know how they're going to cover their kids, not for five or six hours, but for ten hours. And that's really what we're talking about here. And and, you know, one of the reasons that there are so many private daycare facilities is that they're organized around a model that says we will provide that service when you need it. Um, you know, if you have to drop your kids off at noon and you're not going to come get them till eight o'clock, that's okay. We'll be there. Uh, and we're not going to necessarily be doing that. But there are going to be people who are going to need to have coverage for eight to ten hours. Uh, whereas the Ret Connect program, I guess, four hours if people took advantage of both morning and afternoon typically. Four to five hours, right? Um, so it's a big difference there. Uh, and uh, it is something that, you know, even if if we went to something that said basically kids would come to school one or two days a week, that doesn't really help the parent who needs childcare. Because they're still going to have three days or four, where they're going to need additional childcare um, options available to them. Uh, and if that's not space that's available in the school, that may be a problem as well. So I I want to get back to the basic question and I would be very interested in supporting uh, assistance for childcare um, as part of the CARES Act money. Um, and while I don't think that we want to say it's just going to be free for everybody, I think we want to try to provide um, assistance to those who are most stressed, uh, because oftentimes folks who are going to who are going to need that childcare assistance are going to be employed in low-wage jobs. And that's that's where we really need to be concerned about the financial aspect of it. Um, so
I mean, we don't want to, we don't want, we want to try to avoid having a child home alone at four years old, five years or five years old, I guess. I guess you're talking only about school-aged children.
Well, I think the reason why we're talking about that is because children who have, or parents who have children younger than school-aged children, if they work, they're already dealing with that. I mean, that's something that when your child isn't school-aged yet and you work, you already have to have that childcare need met. This is a new need that I think has come up because of this. And so that's why we're trying to address the new need. But I think to Mr. Mullen's point, this is highlighting the importance of childcare that's always been there, but really hasn't necessarily been to the forefront prior to this. And so I have been involved prior to this with um, improving access to childcare. You know, we did the childcare subsidy program, which does not meet the need. Um, you know, there's quality childcare, but to your point, it's the timeframe. So these are not new conversations. These are just conversations that are coming to you to be expanded upon because of what's happening. And so I think, you know, the point of the schools and what they do, there's different parameters, there's different rules and regulations than we have for childcare. So we're trying to address, to your point, the need to have children be safe and cared for and assisted and supported. And so I think whatever we can do to facilitate that, I'm hoping that we will be able to do.
And we have a sense of of the numbers of people who have availed themselves of uh, Ret Connect in the in the past. About four hundred, four hundred and fifty a week. Um, we know that we have a high unemployment rate, which may mean that some people um, are home now, who would not have been home before. And maybe you don't feel that they're in a position to spend anything on on childcare either.
But I think the needs, you know, you do have people who were unemployed because of this, but with unemployment assistance potentially ending, they may be returning to work. And then we do have folks who are able to telework, so maybe they don't have the need that they had before. So I think that's where it's hard to really quantify until we say, we have this program. Tell me if you need it. So that's the challenge, I think, in trying to quantify this is that people's positions this time last year, it's different than it was for some folks.
And I do think too that you have to be careful about, just because you can, I mean, there may be an employer expectation that watching your kids while you're working isn't something they're willing, I mean, they want their employer to have a hundred percent on their job. So they may have a need as well. I mean, you have, it's great that your employees are getting their work done. But if you get into a situation where what, you're getting your work done at eleven P M., but we've missed the client call at nine or or ten, then then you have to, you have to relook at things.
Absolutely.
Yeah, so.
So that's just the childcare assistance discussion. We do have another bullet, which hopefully will not be quite as lengthy. Um, but uh, everyone's ready to move on. Um, talking about the um, outside entity and community support, we do have um, programs, nonprofits, agencies who have stepped up um, to meet the demand, which has increased. And so what we want to propose is carving out some funds. We don't have a dollar figure in mind. Um, to then have entities apply for assistance. So if you think about it similar to the process we do in the regular budgets, budget cycle, we have um, agencies that fill out a form and they say this is what they want to spend the money on, this is their need. And then we decide whether, you know, we're going to fund them and how much. So we've come up with some questions that we would ask folks, um, what is the area of need? So emergency food, um, rent mortgage assistance, um, utility assistance, emergency shelter, childcare, so others. So we have ways for people to say, this is what my need is. Um, how have they responded to the needs of residents? What have they seen increase? Um, how do they plan to use the funds? And then, you know, have they collaborated with other organizations? What other support they have received? You know, for example, um, you know, we have concern again about food. You know, there's people who still can't work, can't afford food, and we have agency staff up to provide that. Um, rent assistance, mortgage assistance, we still have folks who have not been able to pay that. And so we have gotten some assistance, but I don't think it's going to meet the total need for everybody out there. Um, we have concern about utility assistance. Um, we have concern about utility assistance. We don't have a lot of entities that provide assistance for utilities. So if we um, have agencies apply for funding, you know, we talked about how we can certify. What they're using the money for, but we wanna be able to provide that to organizations so that they can assist um, people with, with needs.
Oh, I guess, so one thing that comes to mind is the four H. Are, are you talking about something like the four H?
As far as she's really, we've talked an awful lot about nonprofits and do they qualify?
We're not talking about nonprofits.
We're, we're talking about nonprofits that are providing a COVID-related response. So just because a nonprofit, four H's discussion with me was they didn't have their camps this summer. Therefore, they lost revenue, that wouldn't qualify. Business community, it's very clear in the CARES Act, I give money to a business for whatever purpose they use it, it's okay. We can do it with nonprofits that are providing, say the food bank is doing more food deliveries and they need more money because of COVID related. We absolutely could pay for that. Probably schools, private schools, that are doing things that are teaching related for COVID, probably fund that. But the nonprofits that would come to you and say, we employ people, we have a loss of income because of COVID. They don't appear to qualify. Sharon Mistay's been on a number of calls with that. There are counties and localities that have funded those types of things. I think many are now trying to figure out, does that really qualify, maybe rethinking it? So we're not talking about nonprofits in general because we don't believe they qualify.
That's too bad because they, several of our non, I mean, I, which, this list that you've given is absolutely very, very important. But there's a lot of nonprofits that do a lot of good work here. And I mean, it's, I, I'm not arguing with you because it's, it's CARES, I mean, there's nothing that, but that's too bad.
Yeah, I think when the, when the money first became available, there wasn't a lot of guidance. And so because there's not a lot of guidance, people tend to take one of two directions. They either say, well, there's not a lot of restrictions, we can use it for whatever we want. Or, well, the restrictions haven't been released yet, we should be very conservative in how we spend it. And because of that, there's been a lot of inconsistency in the interpretation of what it can be used for, in my professional opinion. We took a very conservative approach. If it didn't specifically say that we could use it for something, we were very conservative. What I have seen on some of the listservs that I'm on with my counterparts across the state. There were some localities that were funding these agencies as well as funding their schools just for potential revenue shortfalls. That have now come back and asked questions of the group, should we have done that? You know, because now there is a little bit more guidance out there. Um, and so, again, just looking at it from a very conservative standpoint. Most of the nonprofits that we provide funding for during the budget. And we provide about two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars of assistance to true nonprofits that provide citizens. Services that we don't otherwise provide would probably qualify. Because they can support that there's been an uptick in the demand for their services. It's those, for example, like four H, that, that just didn't have a program, and so they have a revenue shortfall. So like us, we can't supplant a revenue shortfall. And from our interpretation of the guidance, we couldn't provide it to them for the same purpose.
Okay, yeah, because I do think, like, something like the, you know, going back to the whole childcare. Four H does this great affordable, like a hundred and thirty dollar overnight camp for. James City County kids that wouldn't normally be able to go to camp um, and all over. So I think some of the other counties that have probably given them a little bit of money back to what you're talking about. So I, I'm just using them as an example because I've, I've spoken to them and I know that they're really, that they're hurting, so.
Well, I do think there's some agencies that have um, transformed and shifted as well. So there may be some agencies that didn't necessarily initially provide a service, but they shifted to provide a service in response. So that, I think, may qualify, because again, it's related to, I provided a service because of what happened to meet a need. And if we're talking about these funds going through the end of December and maybe even extended. If there's agencies, you know, for example, you know, agencies or who, who then maybe provide childcare because the schools aren't open. Maybe that's considered, I'm just speculating, you know, a response. And so I think as this continues, because we're not, at this point, putting a dollar figure on how much we would provide. But rather saying, you know, what do you need? And then we would go through and assess that and make sure that it is response. Related to the response for COVID and then what are the needs?
Who's assessing that?
I think we would, what we normally do in the season is that, you know, we at Social Services look for the ones who are serving citizen needs. You know, there's other entities that look, you know, based on what their professional job is. And so it would be a collaboration primarily initially between Social Services and FMS to look through the applications. But if we have entities that are, check the other category. We would then work with them to see, maybe there's some other funding opportunities, or maybe unfortunately we just can't fund them. But we would have to see what the other category would be. But we talked about opening it up and seeing what the need is rather than um, being really restrictive. So we're not promising anything to anybody, we're just saying, what is the need? Can you meet these parameters? Having met this need, that feels a little bit broader at this point.
As far as to your point of helping a four H, and I haven't really asked this of Mistay, so I might be stepping out. But the childcare that they're providing in response most likely to COVID, maybe, and I don't know that. Could we help subsidize their program? Likely. So maybe that's another discussion for us in childcare. And the other part, if, if the board wants to be able to do something for nonprofits. Uh, it would take some work on our side to figure that out, but you allocated money for the business community before we had CARES money to do it. You certainly could put a pot of money out there that is local money, not anything CARES, it's our general fund dollars. If you felt strongly that we ought to be helping nonprofits, I don't wanna, not encouraging that, I'm just telling you. Option wise, if you felt the need was that great for just nonprofits in general, we still would have that challenge of how do we decide? Who gets what and how much, but if you want us to pursue that, we could.
I'd, I'd like to ask, cause it, it's, this is one of the, you've sort of semi answered one of my questions here. Cause the latest thing we had was that, that five hundred thousand dollars we had set aside. To date, we've only used less than two hundred thousand.
I think that, I got a report today I was gonna share with you this week, we just eclipsed two hundred thousand. So there is three hundred thousand.
Three hundred thousand dollars still left. And then, so my question, uh, was that I was gonna, going to ask was. Um, could we open that up to nonprofits? But since that has been funded with CARES money. It comes back to that same discussion that we have to go through to make sure whatever we do meets the requirement, so it's not.
If, if we're using the CARES money, that'd be correct. If you wanted to fund a separate pot, uh, and do another way that. And then it's a matter of processing, would the thirty day fund process that, or we do, do we do the processing of those requests and the application procedure?
And I know one of the, one of the criteria that we had talked about looking at was, and it's not necessarily a direct revenue shortfall. But a lot of these entities chose not to raise their fees, but do have additional costs just because of the cleaning they have to do. And, and those types of things, that would qualify. That is an eligible expense. And so it, it, that type of thing, you just have to kind of think about what's driving your cost, what's driving your budget. Is it increased costs? Is it increased demand? I mean, things that you can quantify. Because the money came to us directly, we can't just write a check. We have monetary requirements, so we have to make sure that we can substantiate that. And again, we do have a certification process. The schools were asked to sign it, it would be the same type of process. We would ask them to sign the certification. That they would provide that documentation back to us. If there was anything considered that it, that was not an eligible expense, they would have to return those funds to us. Um, and have to keep all the records and also certify that they didn't receive CARES funding from another entity for the same purpose.
So, so bottom line is we, we haven't written off uh, dealing with um, the nonprofits. It's just that there is a very strict set of procedures and guidelines we'll have to go through.
Absolutely.
Um, which sort of brings me back to that three hundred thousand. I, I don't know, do we need to be advertising that to our business community a little bit more?
Have you some conversation?
So, Mr. Mr. Eisenhower, if I could interject, I did just speak with Pete Snyder. And he did let me know that between now and I think it's Labor Day, they're doing a big push. To try to get the word out, cause it, I think part of the problem is, is not everyone is aware of it. So they are doing a big push, and I think they may, he may have even spoken with um, with Chris Johnson. I'm not sure, but I know that there, there is a big push to try to, try to get this moving as best they can. Uh, uh, up until this um, this Labor Day timeframe. So I don't wanna cut anything off with that until we know that everyone's been made fully aware of what's available to the business community. So just as an update with that.
Well, and I believe that, that since this is funded with CARES money, we, we can continue, continue, it's going right to the end of the year.
Um, the, the CARES money could go to the end of the year. I don't know about the thirty day funds timeframe. I mean, they, I think they meant to be a fairly in and out kind of organization, and so they're still here. I did share uh, in discussions with, with Ms. Sadler, of how do we get more business community, maybe Ms. Larson as well, just in, in some conversations. And we did ask Commissioner Revenue if he could give us our business community and give us addresses and business names to those that might qualify. We did pare it down to a list of about thirty-seven hundred business addresses. And our intent is to put a mailer out this week, we'll announce what the state just shared, because we have a good flyer on that. Uh, that we're business of grants and loans out there as well as the thirty day fund. So we have sent not just electronic, not just in the news media, but we have sent a mailer to the addresses of the businesses that may qualify. Again, still, we weren't able to get very deep into the qualifications, but at least trying to get the word out of these two programs and help our business community all we can. Mr. Chair, the only item for action in all of that, other than discussion, which we appreciate, and I think we have some direction. Uh, we did have the, uh, an ordinance in front of you for extending the waiver of convenient fee charges until December thirtieth. If you would entertain that, does it spend, it's, our current one expires August fifth. So the one that was presented to you would extend that to December thirtieth. It is a CARES Act L O dual expenditure, or we believe it to be. Uh, it's probably about two hundred and eighty thousand between August and December thirtieth that it would cost us. Um, but we think that, uh, one, it's, it was well received to this point from our residents. It was well received by our staff, particularly our treasurer staff in terms of collections. But it would extend to all payments to the county where, where folks are paying, they could use credit card without the three percent fee.
I, I would like to add one other item to, to the list of possible considerations for expenditures with CARE, CARES Act money. And that is uh, for some additional support for the upcoming election. Um, we currently um, are gonna be for the first time having early voting um, on a fairly large scale. And it's, but it's gonna be done just at the rec center. And I would hope that we could at least investigate the possibility of having for part of the time or all of the time. Uh, some, a couple of other sites available at the upper and lower ends of the county. Um, so that uh, people would have the um, an easier time getting to those early voting locations. Wouldn't have to travel perhaps on the lot of buses or through some other means, uh, all the way to the rec center to cast a ballot um, early. So uh, if there is some possibility for us to um, consider that, I think that would be a worthwhile expenditure.
We just give, I, have we heard from the uh, gen- general registrar? How they're doing? And I know they, they bought a boatload of P P E, which I would assume we, or the CARES Act. I mean, um, uh, other, separate from adding additional. Or, or is she able to, to meet everything now, or has she gotten some CARES Act money?
She did receive the CARES Act, or we used some of the CARES Act money for the P P E. I had a conversation um, with Patrick Page today, Director of I T, um, regarding reprogramming. Uh, the poll machines for the rec center so that it can be linked to all the polling places. Um, it's a lot of I T talk, but the bottom line is it's gonna cost us some money to reprogram all of our equipment so that it can be compliant. Um, obviously time is of the essence, and this was really a late development. My understanding is that they're working with our procurement director um, to latch on to the contract that York County is utilizing. Um, because it did have a cooperative clause in it. So that would be eligible for CARES funding.
Mr. McGlynn, I believe that the registrar received some appropriation as well directly, and I'll confirm that. But I'll ask, if, I don't know if timing wise, if she can react quick enough from a meeting all the requirements for having a polling place. I know I've spoken with you about the need to have a September public hearing so that we can declare uh, the rec center as part of her office space. And so maybe we'd be able to include more than that, whether she can do other offices less than the forty-five day requirement. I, I don't mind asking that and having an answer for you. Um, and certainly, um, I'm sure if she could get there, she would appreciate that as well, and we'll, we'll bring that information back to you.
Cause would the CARES Act pay if she had to have an additional position to help that? Does it, would it cover the payroll of that?
Most likely.
About um, uh, before we leave this broadband, where are we with that?
Um, I, I will tell you, we, our county attorney and I, our R M director have had a lot of conversations with Cox Communications. And so they believe, and again, we still have our issues with coverage maps, but they've seen them, we're just not allowed to have them. Uh, the county is very well covered, and what we try to do, we've worked with the school system to get where students are. And we've got Cox looking at how do we get that, that service there. Cox has indicated they can get it to a number of locations. So my hope is to be back to you, maybe, maybe over the month to talk through where we are. We were trying to get cost estimates, so we go ahead and award the work. But they had said within months they could extend the cable. We're talking in areas where they have a trunk line relatively close. And a street that runs down here, and so it's just bringing in coaxial cable and it drops to the house. And I think we will, I think we'll serve a number of our residents there without. When they talk coverages, I know there was a gentleman that was on um, one of the news channels a couple, about a year and a half ago saying he needed the cable. Well, there was a program that Cox implemented that he has cable in his home, so that's one less rural resident that didn't have it before that does today. There's still a number of others, and I do think we'll, we'll make some progress on that for, our hope was before September. But certainly this fall, we'll make progress on a number of those.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I'd, I'd move the adoption of the emergency ordinance, uh, extending the uh. Suspension of the convenience. Convenience fees to December thirtieth.
Okay, we have a motion. Mr. Stevens, call the roll, please. Mr. McGlynn?
Aye.
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Ms. Sadler?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Mr. Eisenhower?
Aye.
Okay, good. Okay, we are next up on Shaping Our Shores Master Plan Update.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Um, I'm excited to be here tonight to present the final Shaping Our Shores Master Plan update to you for your approval this evening. The plan I'm about to present represents well over a year and a half of work by a very diverse county staff team. I'd be remiss if I didn't start by taking a minute to mention them by name and thank them for their hard work. Members of the team include Alex Holloway and Aleister Parkinson from Parks and Recreation. Chris Johnson and Laura Muster from the Office of Economic Development. Daryl Cook and Sean Gordon from the Department of General Services. Jose Rivero from the Planning Department and Mike Brigakis from the James City Service Authority. As you're aware, the Shaping Our Shores Master Plan was created in two thousand nine to guide the revitalization of future amenities of our three waterfront park. Facilities to include the James City County Marina, Chico Hominy Riverfront Park and Jamestown Beach Event Park. At the time, two of these parks were newly acquired, and the plan was crafted from extensive public input to include all future possibilities for each site. Since the adoption of the plan in two thousand nine, there have been improvements to amenities and infrastructure at each park location. As one would expect, park usage and revenues have also grown since that time. This, in addition to the age of the Shaping Our Shores Master Plan, led to the decision to review and update the plan. The goal of the team was not to recreate the old plan, but rather to update it with the following goals. First, evaluate and confirm where existing park amenities are met currently and meeting community needs. Identify unmet needs or challenges to improve existing amenities and to evaluate maintenance and conditions of the park features. Recommendations also needed to be reviewed as it related to water restrictions, grant easements, environmental concerns, resource protection areas. Zoning and codes in order to create a plan that was realistic and obtainable. On September twenty-fourth, two thousand nineteen, I came before you at a work session and presented the draft plans, the three parks that the committee had developed. At the time, I received your feedback on those plans and you endorsed the public input process outlined by the committee. In November of two thousand nineteen, two public meetings were held at the James City County Recreation Center to gather input. At the time, an online survey was also conducted for a month for those who could not attend. Paper survey stations were also placed at the James City County Recreation Center lobby. At the, and at the offices of both the Marina and the Chico Hominy Riverfront Park. A total of fifty-seven comments were received and included in the newly revised draft plan. The revised maps were then taken to the James City County Department of Parks Recreation Advisory Commission in January of this year, where they were unanimously endorsed. From there, they were taken to the Design Review Committee of the Planning Commission and then received Planning Commission approval at their meeting on March fourth. As a result, I'm here this evening to. As a result, I'm here this evening to present the final draft plan for your final endorsement and approval. I have the three park maps that I can now put up on the screen, and we can briefly review the changes and the map updates for your consideration. First up is Chickahominy Riverfront Park. Since 2009, there's been several facility improvements that have been made at this park. These include resurfacing the pool, paving and improvements to the recreational vehicle loop, recreation vehicle loop, replacing the water main, removal of a smaller pool, the addition of a splash pad, and the addition of the Women Mary Boathouse. So those were added to the map since they've already been completed. In addition to those, the team also recommended adding the following to the map. We added the proposed James City Service Authority Water Treatment Plant. This is a possible future water option for the county, so that is denoted in the middle of the map. And amenities were kept out of that area in case we ever do need to build that facility. Relocated long-term RV and boat storage to the front corner of the park. We removed the second entrance that was going into the park. There's a couple of reasons for that. First, we feel like we could accommodate the same thing by putting a new internal park road to divert traffic to the rowing area. And we wanted to minimize the number of cut-throughs over the Virginia Capital Trail right there. We had the addition of some camper amenities to include a propane filling station, laundry rooms, an environmental education recreation room, updated bathhouses, and a relocated pump-out station. And lastly, there's addition of a second rowing building due to the growth in the sport. So those are the changes for that park. Next up, we have the James City County Marina. Since the past plan, the Department of Parks and Recreation assumed daily operations of the Marina from a private contractor. The Board of Supervisors leased 10 acres to the Economic Development Authority in 2015. And then the EDA leased their parcel to Billsburg Brewery, and a production building and tasting room were constructed. There has also been some substantial changes to this park map since 2009. In particular, some items were removed based on their location and floodplains in the RPA. Some changes include eliminating the parking peninsula and new ramp due to wetlands, removal of condos, hotel, and retail shops that originally appeared on the first map. These items were not endorsed by the Board of Supervisors in the first plan, and the size of the property does not support their development now. Relocating the Marina Office Building out of the floodplain. Relocating the dry stack storage out of the floodplain. Adding additional short-term trailer parking, that'd be day parking. Proposing to remove long-term boat storage to Jamestown Beach Event Park due to lack of space on the site. Adding a new second entrance into a new parking lot. Adding a semi-permanent event tent to be used for economic development opportunities by Billsburg. Relocate the proposed restaurant food service area and relocate the boat ramp and the fuel dock. I know Mr. McGlynn had a comment from a concerned citizen about this map in particular as it relates to pervious cover with the proposal of the new parking areas. And obviously, this is a really broad draft plan that doesn't have that kind of detail. Those details are fleshed out later when you go to actually build an amenity. But obviously, in looking at all the things that were removed from the original plan and what we're doing now, you know, stormwater mitigation, environmental issues are of a great concern for the site. So all that stuff will be taken into consideration when we do go to build some of these amenities. All right, the last park is the Jamestown Beach Event Park. All right, since 2009, several grants have been obtained to make improvements to the beach. A grant was awarded to assist with removing the concrete rubble that littered the shoreline and the creation of three beach areas and the installation of shoreline grasses. There was an upgrade to the parking and entranceway, created an accessible paved walkway, and constructed a restroom concession building. There's also been an upgrade to the water and sewer system for that bathroom facility, and a paddlecraft launch site was created. Changes and modifications are limited on this site due to archaeology and the historic sites that are there. And also, there's two grants that were used to purchase the property, and there's easements on the land for those. So as a result of that, the following were also proposed to change on this map. Relocate a fishing pier off of VDOT property to the far end of the beach. Add additional restrooms and parking for events and beach patrons. Add an event tent for use with the Ambler House. Realign the park entrance along Jamestown Road to intersect with the road leading to the Marina. Of course, this is all contingent on VDOT approval. Close a section of Greens Springs Road that runs in front of the park and align it to meet Jamestown Road. Add the long-term boat storage to support revenue development, and that'd be moving from the Marina over here across the street. And there's addition of a private-public running center to support community racing events and provide workspaces for Parks and Recreation staff. So that concludes the updates for all three park sites. And I'd be happy to answer any questions or give any comments on any of those.
Got a couple. Over at the Jamestown site, the Jamestown-Yorktown Foundation has that one parking area there. Is there any timeline that they're going to put that in, or is that just in case they ever need something?
Can't point to it. Are you talking the one that's carved out right at the entrance?
Yep.
They do use that now for large events that they have, like Military Through the Ages, those kind of events. It's used on a as-needed basis by them.
Okay, and that'll stay like it is right now, just to?
Yes.
Okay. All right, and that is, that's something we can, we utilize it at times, too?
We've asked permission to use it for large events that we've had there also.
And that was fine as long as it worked with their scheduling.
Yeah, yes, through negotiations.
There you go. That'd be great. And also, the, I'm glad to see the fishing pier. Can't get enough fishing piers for everyone out there. And can we, can we still utilize, as we bring this plan together, the VDOT area until VDOT decides that they ever want to enlarge that? Could we, could we leave that as an extra fishing spot for people? There's a lot of people that love to go down that little ramp.
You know, the peninsula that's there right now?
Right.
I don't see why not. We're not going to obviously do any improvements there, making any changes. Yeah, we'll put our effort to the pier that's more accessible.
Yeah, okay, great.
Property we own.
I constantly coming down on the ferry there, I see people fishing there.
It's very popular.
All the time. In fact, sometimes they take y'all's picnic tables and take them down.
Yes, they do.
On the chick, I know the rowing building down there had Wiensburg on it. I think on the front, last time you showed us the rowing building down on the chick, had Wiensburg rowing or something on there?
It's a, the building that's there right now was a partnership between ourselves, the Wiensburg Boat Club, and then the Women Mary with their intermural team. So it was a partnership lease deal that's there right now. And there is a need for a second building based on the growth in the sport, how many people we're seeing there. I don't think those details have been worked out, but we did want to denote that second building there, if that possibility comes to fruition.
Be nice to see James City County in our park than Wiensburg. That's a long way.
Just saying.
Two or miles.
I think that's, Wiensburg Boat Club was the name of the nonprofit that spearheaded that.
I'm going to change it to James City County Boat Club.
So I, let me just take the opportunity to thank you and all the members of the committee who worked so hard on this because, you know, I think it's been a very deliberate and thoughtful process. I attended a couple of the sessions where citizens had an opportunity to give their comments, and I know that they were listened to very carefully. And the citizens who came out, not a huge number of them, but they were very knowledgeable about the parks and the practical concerns that they had. And I feel that as we've gone through this process, you all have been very transparent, given us clear indication of where things were headed and what the limitations were and so forth. And so I think you've done a great job in putting this together, Ms. Brolin and Mr. Carnifex and your whole team. Thank you.
So, thank you so much for everything. I do have a question about Ambler's House.
Okay.
What the, you know, what is, what's going on with it? Does it, is it currently have electricity in it right now and water in it?
You want to answer? I know there's more.
That is not the kind of water.
It does not have electricity in the house. There is electricity on the site. And so when they've had special events, when we've had the triathlon out there, there's access to electricity. But it is not on in the, in the house right now. We are running the HVAC system during, when it's needed. So there is electricity, but it's not open to the public. It hasn't been updated. The only thing that we've done, General Services through there, is take care of the outside, the roof, repair that, and get it structurally sound. So I don't know what is your question?
You've confused me because you said there's no electricity, but we run an HVAC system. So somebody out there fanning it or?
No, there's electricity in it, but it's not open to the public.
Yeah, that's.
Yes.
Okay. My worry was that there was a house sitting there right now on a day like today with no electricity going through it. And it's 100, which is not good for a house. It's not good for a house to be unoccupied anyway. But, but, so it is being air-conditioned today.
Yes.
Okay. And so then I see where we have a possibility for a tent, which I would really like to see us, I mean, put up a tent.
That was from, input from Economic Development. So that would be an amenity for them. If you turn that into a wedding venue, then that tent would be used for the actual event under the tent versus in the house.
Right, because the house is not going to work for a wedding. Well, now during COVID, it might work great because about 25 people. But it's not going to work under normal circumstances, and I would really like to see us get some, some use out there. I know that there was some interest in that, but of course, now that's going to have to scale back because we're back to 50 people for this year. But I personally would like to see James City County put up a tent. And if I'm not saying, I'm looking to you, John, to be, you know, going out there at 9 o'clock on a Saturday night to make sure that the wedding's cleaned up. And, but it just would seem to me that that would be a great addition to the Ambler House of possibilities. Because I don't think the house is really going to be able to be used as an event other than, sort of that kind of thing. So, so I was.
I think that's a decision we have to make is, you know, because we had put, placed an RFP out there prior to COVID and to see if the private sector was interested in something like that, the Ambler House and events to take place out there. So I think COVID has impacted that. And so then it's really our decision as a county, do we want to get into that effort of supplying that size tent, renting it, operating special events out there, whether it's a wedding or anything else. You know, I think that's something we need to think about. I don't know the private sector interest right now, and that would be a discussion we would need to have with Chris. And, you know, is that interest still there or not at all? But I do think there's opportunities to have special events there outdoors and eventually inside, too, when we can make the improvements.
Yeah. No, I think the inside will be great, but it's definitely for us, for smaller groups because it's a choppy.
It's chopped up. It's not, it's not open.
Yeah. So, so I.
So if I could, if I could jump in, Ms. Larson, I would agree. I think it's a great idea to utilize what we have. If it's, you know, it's our property and we own it and it is what it is, for the county to put up the tent, which is, looks like that's what's being proposed now, and for us to utilize the location for events, I think that's a great opportunity for us to possibly recoup some of the money that we've put into this. So to your point, Ms. Larson, I think, I think that's a great idea.
No, I would be definitely interested in more of that discussion. So the running center, do we know where we're at with that discussion? I know that Adam, I think, had mentioned.
Chris, help us.
Sorry.
So that, I guess, two quick updates on the unsolicited proposals that we've had sent to us over the last year or so. One was the running center, which has been around. They originally looked at the War Hill site for those that were on the board at the time. Now they're looking at this site. I've had conversation with them in the last few weeks because they were interested in when the board was going to make a decision on this master plan. So I know the running center folks are interested in pursuing that. And then we've also had a draft unsolicited proposal for some camping RV sites out there, and they are also interested in continuing. One of the things that I informed both of them is that, you know, the utilities would be something they would need to incorporate because we weren't able to put the loop system in. And so the running center may or may not require a larger water systems, potentially a fire hydrant. There's some things that they may have to address in their proposal that they originally weren't considering. So the campground and RV folks, they, they were expecting that to begin with. I think, you know, they are both interested in submitting a proposal. If the board adopts this and we move forward, we would issue an RFP. So it would be out there for, you know, a certain amount of time to comply with the Procurement Act. And then all proposals would be accepted at that time, and then we would evaluate them and see what was a win-win for, for us as a locality would fit that site and for the, for those that, the vendors that may be interested.
Hey. We don't have any more questions for staff. We do have a Shaping Our Shores Master Plan Update Resolution, which adopts the updates.
Move the adoption of the resolution.
Motion, Mr. Stevens, roll.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Mr. McGlynn?
Aye.
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Ms. Sadler?
Aye.
Mr. Eisenhour?
Aye.
Motion cares. Mr. Eisenhour, can I ask one more thing while you're working with this property? John Carnifex and I have talked some about metal detecting in Jamestown Beach, and we brought that change to you, I think, January or February. We let those that wanted to recreationally metal detect go through that on Jamestown Beach. We said we'd reevaluate that, so they had stopped because the summer session came in, that was the time to stop. They would be allowed to again in October unless we changed direction. And there was enough, we held a community meeting, there was a significant concern from the archaeological community to allow that. I think the recreational community certainly has enjoyed it, but at least wanted to bring that back to your attention. We don't have to have direction tonight, but to change the ordinance would require a public hearing. And so if you want us to head that way, we would need to plan to bring that back to you in the September timeframe, whether your first meeting or your work session, to change the ordinance back. Talking with Mr. Carnifex, our recommendation, if you were to change it, would be to allow metal detecting with oversight of recreation staff or the archaeological committee or a group of both. Meaning, if we needed to go out there, we want to go in the playgrounds and get metal out of the playgrounds, it'd be nice to have a metal detecting group to go do that. It'd probably be nice to go to the beach once or twice a year to get the metal that's been dropped out of the sand. And so the previous ordinance wouldn't have allowed that. Our recommendation, if you're going to change it or have a desire to change it, would be to allow some ability for us to do it in a controlled environment. So when we have those unique circumstances, that the director working with the archaeological community could facilitate that. Not to go find artifacts, but to go find recent things that have been dropped either in the playground materials or the sand, so.
So have we, while we've been allowing this metal, metal detecting to go on, has anything been discovered?
Oh, I, we probably had at least a dozen different individuals that I'm aware of going down there. Some have sent me pictures of what they have collected, and mostly it's trash and debris. And one gentleman said he found, you know, $1.65 and change. And so, and several metal objects that were safety issues that were, you know, below. Because when we run the groomer across it, it's only going down about two or three inches, and that's collecting the trash. They'll go down as eight to 12 inches is the depth that they would go. So they're finding some of that stuff. But there was no artifact that, or anything of historical significance or anything other than trash and objects that were found by those that communicated and. than trash and objects that were found by those that communicated and expressed, they thanked us and they gave us pictures of what they found out there, so. But what the original ordinance was, there was no metal detecting allowed on any facility, any Parks and Rec facility. We changed it to say, except under those areas identified by the Director of Parks and Recreation. So when we had the community meeting, and the far majority of them were historians or archaeologists from this area, even from, even from Richmond traveled down, you know, their concern was it was broad, and that even though the present director may not allow it on other places or in historical significant areas, allowing the director to make that decision was, many of them were fearful, that it was too much authority. So what, after the meeting, and I expressed thank you to all of those that attended, said I would follow up with the board at a later date. We did, and that if there was going to be a change, a potential change, I would communicate back to all the email, all the folks that I had email address on, and that we would bring this back to them, so I would notify them if the board was going to consider a change, and that I, that my recommendation would be that we still allow it under the supervision of a Parks and Rec staff or a professional archaeologist. And so that gives us the ability to do it in a controlled manner. It would eliminate what we now were doing is from October through March, anybody could go down to the beach and use their metal detector. And to refresh your memory on that, that's when I did the research, most man-made beaches in the Commonwealth allowed metal detecting on man-made beaches, and that's why I had that, I allowed that to happen that first year, so that was really my intent. So I think I've given you the history and where we are, so if the board, if it's the desire of the board to change it, you know, I would recommend that we have those two options in there.
Looks like we ought to be bringing that back to you in September. Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, we are down to board requests and directives.
Call pass.
We've got to pass.
I'm good, too. Yeah, just, I just finished my...
Just you were good? Yeah, I thought you passed.
Then I just wanted to say thank you all, because I just finished my first BACO Supervisor Certification, Certification Class, which was a lot, I don't know what I was thinking, but it was very interesting and a lot of reading, et cetera, but, but anyway, start the next one at the end of August, so.
Good job.
You're repeating, you know what they say about that, but anyway.
Did anything, John?
No, we're good.
Sue?
I'm, I'm good, thank you.
Okay, I only had two items. Number one, we had a Habitat for Humanity groundbreaking today out at Forest Heights, and they had a nice tent, so we were out of the direct sunlight, but it was beastly. But we had four families, the Brown family, the Fairfax family, the Shank family, and the Newby family there to meet the folks and actually turn dirt, and it's very interesting. Two of the, two of the four families are involved with school, the school teachers, and so these are folks who live in our community, can afford now to live in our community, and that work in our community, and I will, once again, have to extend my, our sincere thanks to Habitat Community and all of the corporate sponsors for all they do for our community. Janet Green said that the one thing that we can do to continue helping is, their biggest problem right now is land. So if we can help them in acquiring and finding land, we can continue helping this program help people in our, our community. So I think that's something we need to keep in mind looking forward, and I really appreciated the opportunity to be out there. The only other thing I would talk about is that I've been watching with interest the numbers, and from the time we started, it's about the end of June, we've gotten up to about two hundred and fifty-one cases here in James City County, and in the last four weeks, we've gone to five eighteen. So it's just gotten off the charts, and I, I know that a lot of it probably has to do with some of the younger folks. We've seen some of the data about, I will tell you that today when I was out there, everybody was wearing a mask. It was a little harder under that tent to separate, because we didn't want to get out in the sunshine too much, but everybody was wearing a mask, and I think that was very, very, very helpful, and I really appreciate folks looking out for each other that way. I think the other thing we need to consider is we have to have a decision by the third of September on, it has to be a public hearing.
Public hearing to declare the Rec Center Office of the Register for the absentee voting.
So what, what we're going to have to do is we're going to have to set up a special meeting, and I would pose, if you guys want to do it on the September first, which is a Tuesday, at five o'clock. I'm coming back from the lake that day, but I'll be back by that time. And it'd be a very short meeting, it'd be just one, the one item. We would come in and deal with that in particular, public hearing, and pass that resolution so that we get it done in a timely manner to make sure that it's all taken care of. Is everybody okay with that?
Yeah, would, are you going to try to see?
Yes.
The additional...
We would talk about the other things, I'd make you aware of that as we put that together, so we'll see if you could have more than one location and what the cost would be. That would be a perfect meeting to have that discussion for all of that, so yes.
I'll move to amend the calendar for the Board of Supervisors to add a meeting on September first at five PM in this location.
That'd be a special, a special meeting at five AM.
At this point, amend the calendar, we'll get you there, and that'll take us to it.
Okay. All right, we have a motion. Mr. Stevens, call roll, please.
Mr. McGlinnan?
Aye.
Ms. Sadler?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Ms. Eisenhour?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay.
Will, will you send a reminder out, please?
Yes, we will.
Just so we don't forget about that special meeting.
We'll send a reminder out. Okay, then I will look for a motion to adjourn until five PM on September the first. I'll move, we have a motion.
Mr. McGlinnan?
Aye.
Ms. Sadler?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Ms. Eisenhour?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, we are adjourned, wherever my roundabout is.